All right, everybody ready? We got our city attorney showed up right on the money.
Not a second is spared.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 7th, 2022 meeting of the Edina City Council. We will have an HRA meeting following the city council meeting this evening, but tonight we're just going to be calling first to order the city council meeting. But before we do that, I want to just remind everybody that we're doing this in a hybrid fashion as we have been doing for quite a while now. So if you're watching on cable TV or at edinamn.gov/livemeetings or on Facebook, you can participate in one of two ways this evening, either in community comment or in the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have two public hearings this evening, and you do that by calling 888-504-7949. Numbers on the screen. Enter the participant passcode 949937. Press *1 on your telephone keypad to get in the queue to speak, and then Brittany will bring you into the council if you want to appear either in community comment portion of the agenda or in the public hearing portion of the agenda. And just a reminder to those who are in the audience and who might be calling in tonight, with respect to community comment, you can address issues of concern to you relative to the council, but you can't have anything in community comment that addresses something on the agenda this evening or a matter that's scheduled for a future public hearing. So now I'm going to turn to manager Neil, who, before we call roll, has a couple of introductions he wants to make.
Thank you, your honor, members of council. We have two prominent members of our staff team who aren't with us tonight. They just weren't able to be here tonight, and so we have some substitutes. I want to introduce you to Noel Mills. Noel will be subbing for Sharon Allison, our city clerk, and Brittany Bader. Brittany is subbing for Jennifer Bennerad on the communications side, so we welcome them to their first time in this setting.
Welcome, both of you. Nice to have you with us. All right, and, DeWol, let's call roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Houghland.
Here. Having called the meeting to order, the next matter before us following roll call is the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's to the Republic where which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We've got a form of meeting agenda that's been published to our residents and also to the council members and staff. Manager Neil, is there any change to the agenda?
No changes from staffs.
All right. Is there any motion to modify the agenda, otherwise we'll request a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Member Anderson moves. Member Pierce seconds the approval of the meeting agenda for this Wednesday, September 7, 2022. Any further discussion? Know those in favor of approving the meeting agenda for this date, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, and now we are at community comment. So if you want to address the council, we'll go first to folks in the audience. If you want to address the council on a matter of concern to you that's not on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing, feel free to come forward, and then we'll handle folks that might be online when we're finished with hearing from our residents, our fellow residents that are with us live this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Roger Nun. I live at 5608 Code Avenue South. I have lived there since 1990, moved back here. I had lived in Edina from 1964 to 1968. My education and my work took me away. I was very anxious to move back to Edina when I came back. Still like living here. I live in the Melody Lake, A, B, and Birch Crest area that is under construction or almost done, and have had the opportunity to meet several of you, and I thank you for your time and your efforts to talk with us and me, visit with some of the neighbors, look at some of our lots. I won't rehash all of the discussion about the landscaping. I will say that, in my mind, the project is not done yet, and I would like to find out when it will be done, and I have a couple of things that concern me. While the seating was done, there is still a lack of backfill to make homes and corners up to contour and grade, which is very frustrating to see. They are watering, and that's appreciated, but, you know, we just don't know when all this is going to be done, and we don't get communications on that. My view of that is that, frankly, between the contractor and the supervision from various people in Edina, there hasn't been a lot of caring. Frankly, this is not the city I lived in in '64 to '67, and it's when it was a village. In fact, I used to live over by Garden, the old Garden Park, pardon me, and probably the only person here in the room that ever swam in that mud hole. But, you know, I like it here. I want to stay here. I just think there's a few things that need to be done. I've watched my neighbors suffer personally and financially with the work and the efforts that have gone in over the last year and a half. Many people had to do their own landscaping repair if they had irrigation systems because the person that was working for the city was just not very good at it and not very timely in getting it done. They spent money on their equipment and on private contractors. I would like that to be considered for them as this moves forward, just as you have granted some money on the water credit, which is appreciated. Also find that when it comes to the grading, I think it's necessary it be done properly so that the neighborhood doesn't have sink areas down by the curbs. You know, we're a neighborhood of over a few hundred homes, and it reflects on every home if there's a bad corner and intersection. I don't think anybody wants this any worse than it was when you started a year and a half ago, and right now it still is. And that's highly disappointing to me because of the communications I and most of have had with the engineers. And city council has been helpful when I've worked with them, and I really appreciate Really, I think that's it. I would like to see that handled, and then I'd also like to have a chance to understand what's going to happen when the assessments come out. I think, frankly, that the lack of quality work in all this area does not help our real estate values going forward for a few years, not forever, but for a few years. And I think a lot of us have taken, like I put in my own sod, so I'm not asking for money for that, but I think that we need to keep in mind that many of us have tried to bring it back to what it was. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nun. For folks that may be in the audience or listening in, it was my fault. I forgot to mention that we use a three-minute segment here for comments from residents, and usually, you know, you'll have the green light when you should start, and then when the yellow light comes on, you have about 30 seconds to wrap up. And I let Mr. Nun drift over because I didn't forewarn him, and so if you have comments you want to make, if we could try to stick as close as we could to that three-minute rule, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Come on forward, please.
Ruth Ann Metzger, 5600 Dale Avenue, Melody Lake, A.
I think we've all been worried about your house, Ms. Metzger.
Pardon?
I think we've all been out to and worried about your house.
Well, guess what? I've got the sprinklers. They made a huge difference, so I really appreciate being able to pilot that. So my concerns now are, when will the rest of this project get done? And I emailed the city council and several of the city employees pictures this round with my email, and I brought pictures, but I don't know how the system works, so. Anyway, my first item is Hanson Avenue roadwork for where the railroad tracks are through the 56th Street intersection. It's horrible in my mind, and we need to know what the plan is for addressing that. Will it be done this year? My next concern is the completion of the 56th Street sidewalk that dead ends before Hanson Road, before the lot at Hanson Road. And last year I had to have it plowed or shoveled whenever it snowed. I paid 500 bucks for the season last year to have Edina seasonal services take care of it when it was two inches or more, and I was out there every time otherwise. And the clippers in January are a pain, especially since I have fibromyalgia. Then my third area of concern is the intersection of Dale Avenue and 56th Street. Continue to get trucks going through my corner. I had one Friday night leveled a stake. I straightened the stake, but now I've got tracks through the corner, which hopefully will eventually get cement. I have agreed with Evan to put more cement on that corner from the sidewalk to the curb. It will not be a sidewalk, but it will allow trucks to be able to make that corner because with that fire hydrant bump out, they don't. And I see them when I'm out in my yard. Even the big FedEx trucks can't make the corner. And then leave, I'm getting close to the end. My red bud was damaged with the work, and I had a root about three feet long, four inches wide, when they wrote a tillage between the sidewalk and the tree. And that portion of the tree is wilting. If you drive past my house and I put it in the picture, the side that's nearest the road is wilting, the side that's nearest my house is how it used to look before all this work My last item is I'm concerned that we will be assessed and have assessments due before the work's done, and my policy is the only way you make sure something gets done is you hold payment, and we are going to be forced to pay before this project is done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Metzger. We may be able to address some of these issues yet this evening. Typically, we do it at the next council meeting, but some of these issues, I think, are still fresh in everybody's mind. We'll turn to Director Milner when we're done here. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them? Good evening.
My name is Bennett Gimo. I don't, I'm kind of nervous. What do I say? Do I say my address?
Please.
Okay. 44845 Abbott Avenue South, Edina, Minnesota. And I just wanted to say thank you for listening to everyone, and yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's turn Brittany. Anybody online that wishes to address the council in community comment?
I do not currently have any callers, but although there is a slight delay in the broadcast, so I do recommend that we wait one minute before proceeding.
I think that's a good idea. We've got the number back up on the screen now for folks that might be watching remote. There's the number 888-504-7949, conference ID 949937, and then press *1 to speak to the operator, and then the operator will bring you into the council. Through Brittany.
I currently show a time of 7:13, so I will come back to you at 7:14, or if I have a caller, whichever is soonest.
Thank you.
All right, my clock shows at 7:14, and I still have no callers. I think it's safe to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. All right, let's go to our city engineer Chad Milner, who's been overseeing this project at Melody Lake and does her other street reconstruction work oversight as well. There were some questions raised. I think the key one from Mr. Nun was, there's a, you know, a couple of things. Grading needs to be done well, check that, and then when will the project be done was his kind of overarching question.
Brittany, can you put up the screen? So I thought instead of just me explaining, I'll show some pictures. So we'll wait for those pictures to get up there of the seeding aspects of it, so you can see we've had contractors out there the last two weeks. Again, we apologize for the performance of the contractor. We don't tell them how to do their work. We tell them what the specifications are when they're finished. And in May, when we kept asking, in April, when are you coming out? When are you coming out? They kept telling us, we'll be out there next week, next week, next week. Before you know it, it's June, and they're trying to do stuff when it's not within the seeding window. So that's why they're out there now doing all these corrective actions. And our guys, we've had Evan at Edina and Charlie out there policing every day since they've started here in the last couple of weeks on this work.
Those are people from our staff.
Those are our staff members. We turn our back. They do things differently than we see when we're looking at them, so we're literally out there babysitting every day. Here you can see I'm putting in some of the fill that Mr. Nun was speaking of. Got a few other pictures. Again, here's some where the grass is starting to come in already in just over a week or so. Again, here's the backfill in those areas. Here's one on the corner. You can see some great performance of that top, the seed coming in, just like we would expect. And we actually have one of Ruth Ann's corner with the temp irrigation systems that Charlie set up, and it's doing very well. You can see the grass here on this corner and the performance there. So I thought I'd just share some of that. They're nearly complete with their restoration work. We know there's three systems, temporary systems like this out there, and then Charlie's handed out a few other timers, that people have timers on their systems to help water the new seed. To Ruth Ann's comments, Hanson Road and the railroad tracks, that's only a couple hundred feet of the project. We would have liked that done last year. It is CP Rail. We cannot get a permit from CP Rail. We've been working for over two years to finish that little section near her property. As soon as we can get authority to go forward, we'll do so, but it's within their right-of-way. The latest we have now is an agreement that's almost ready to be signed, but then they've said we can only work on Mondays and Wednesdays, and that doesn't work when we're trying to jack a pipe underneath the railroad track. So we may have to abandon some of the improvements we want to do on our own infrastructure because we cannot get CP Rail to respond to any of our requests to work. So we would love to have that work done. It should have been done last year, but it's been over two years of working with CP Rail at this point, and I am not confident we're going to have any agreements this fall yet to finish that few hundred feet. In my opinion, that doesn't affect the assessments because it's, the majority of the project is done, 99.9% of the project. We have the assessments coming forward to you on October 6th. There will be a public hearing, so the members of the community can again comment on those assessments. In regards to the no parking, our traffic safety committee has now made adjustments to the no parking on the east side of that, where the issue is with moving trucks and trucks turn the corner, that recommendation for a no parking sign is going through the ETC, and then it'll be coming to council soon. So those no parking signs on that corner will be going up to increase that no parking zone, so trucks don't have to cut that corner. We'll work with Evan if he's promised to put in some more concrete there, so we don't have to worry about damaging the sod. And then the tree damage is the first time I've heard about this, but we typically review trees two years following a project, so we're still within that window. And if there's a tree that, according to our city forester, is damaged because of construction, we usually work with the resident on removing and replacing that tree. So I think those were the questions that were posed this evening.
I think those were the, I think you covered that. Oh, the 56th Street sidewalk dead ends, that was one of our concerns, too, that...
Yeah, that was right at the railroad tracks. We can't finish it because we can't finish...
That's all part of the CP problem.
It's all CP, right at that Hanson railroad crossing. So unfortunate that we just can't get a good back and forth with them.
Okay. So our forester will keep an eye on the red bud and...
Yeah, like I said, I'll talk to Luther now that I'm aware of that situation with the tree, and we'll continue to track that going forward.
I think it was last week, I think, Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Pierce were out there one morning, and met with Mr. Nun and others, and then I happened to be out there that evening. But when I drove down 56th, I still thought it looked real weedy. They were cut down, the area, the boulevard, I'll call it, between the new sidewalk and the back of the bulkhead, back of the curb. To me, it looked like it was chopped down, but it was still all quack and crab, and it made me wonder about whether that was a tougher sort of solution than some of the things that you showed on film here, which I thought looked great when I was out on site, too, where you'd cut back to a clean margin, if you will, and then hydroseeded. But that strip in between the sidewalk and the back of the curb, I still think in many places on 56th doesn't look right, and it made me wonder whether we're on the right sort of pathway to a solution there or whether that's a sod issue.
Depending when you were out there. We've been doing work yet this week on that stretch. That was the last of the work.
Okay.
So I think if you were out there early last week, there's been other corrective since then. I've gotten calls from Mr. Worst and Mr. Raffadel, who live in the neighborhood, and they're satisfied with what's going on down on 56th Street there, adjacent to the sidewalk.
Whatever day council members were out there, was it the same day? Was it maybe Tuesday?
Tuesday last week, I think I got a note. So that work happened after you guys were out there.
All right. Okay. I'm eager to go out and take a look.
Thank you.
All right, good. Thanks for that. Prompt any questions? Yeah, Councilmember Pierce.
Just a couple of questions. Can you, Director Milner, explain the correlation between, I get, the sidewalk and the rail issue, so that last few hundred feet, but the comment was also regarding snow removal? And so are those two things correlated somehow?
They're not. The sidewalk that's on 56th Street is a resident-maintained sidewalk, so I believe the comments were related, like, her service, or she gets to the end where it's not finished, and what are they supposed to do because it's not finished, right? That's the issue of not being able to just plow straight out in the Hanson Road. So it's just because it's not finished, I think there's a difficulty of removing the snow. It's not a city sidewalk that we plow, so it's a resident-maintained sidewalk.
And so the fact that it's not completed should not negatively impact the resident?
It's just difficult, right? It's going to end in grass or pavement. I'm not exactly sure what's at the end of it, but they're not able to just keep plowing. They got to jump off the curb almost if that's the case because it's not finished right at that end by Hanson.
Okay. And then the other thing, and this isn't a question, more of a comment, when I was out there, like, just seemed like this shouldn't be that hard. And the thing that I am disappointed in is when you think about the definition of accountable and responsible, like, we're not responsible for doing the work. We hire contractors to do the work, but we're accountable to make sure it gets done right. And as I walked, I actually live in Highlands, and so I actually walked through Yancey and then over into the area that's in question, and even walking past Yancey, it's the same, where there's tons of weeds, and that's the entry into a park that we just dedicated from a historical perspective. And, I mean, really, it's embarrassing. And so I think for me, it's the conversation about what does accountability mean, and I understand we may have different contractors, but I would urge us as a city, not just for this project, but for all projects, really looking at what do we need to do so that we can ensure that we're holding contractors, they're being held accountable to deliver what they've promised to deliver? And I know we're trying to do that, but I sense that there's some challenge in the way that we are currently doing that, because if we don't solve that problem, this is just going to happen again, but it might be a different community at that point. So I would urge us to really spend some time trying to think about, from a city perspective, what do we need to do to solve that particular problem? Thank you.
Thanks for that comment. Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions, Director Milner. The timeline on completion, completion, total completion of the project would be what in your estimation?
Well, the work's basically complete now. In a month, we should see great, we're already seeing great performance of the grass. Before freeze-up, we're going to go and take videos and photos of everything, and if it meets our specifications, then we feel we're basically complete, and we would tell the residents, now it's up to them. Grass or sod takes two to three years to establish. So if nothing happens next summer, it's going to fail, but we need the residents to do whatever they're doing on the rest of their lawn with that new lawn starting next spring, so...
There were several instances, I see from emails, about grading issues and backfill, bringing it up to grade. Has that been resolved, or is there a plan to resolve it if not?
Yep. I showed those pictures where they were filling in, you know, most of those areas. I think there might be a few left, but we're...
But you're on top of those few, and will continue along that line.
Yeah, I mean, the difficult part with topsoil, you need air for stuff to grow. So if you compact it too much, nothing will grow, and if you don't, you know, if it's too fluffy, it's going to settle. So there's this balance between, you're always going to have some settlement with topsoil, and we've seen that over the years with different projects, and we spec out the top end topsoil, and it really settles. We had that issue with a different project, so it's a balancing act between compaction and what's needed to grow grass.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments, questions? Councilmember Pierce reminded me of one other thing, one other observation, Director Milner, and that was, on these city-owned areas, you know, I think we're accountable and responsible And I noticed the same thing along Melody Lake, kind of where Melody Lake and Code are there. We've got a space in there that looks...
That one's not done. We're doing a natural landscaping feature there yet, where we're going to do some, so we don't have to mow. We're trying to get rid of mow areas and do natural landscaping.
Okay.
So Code and that Melody Lake area is a little different situation, but the park is, Yancey Park is within this project limit.
All right, good. And I think, you know, we've talked about this off and on over the past several years, where you've been doing a great job on all these street reconstruction projects, but it seems like the Achilles' heel has always been this landscaping from the new street, back of the curb, up into the yards, or if we got a new sidewalk in there, like on 56th. And I know you're thinking about how to solve this problem, and maybe we do it internally.
Yeah, we're going to have a bigger discussion on, do we go back to sod? There's challenges with sod. I mean, we can keep grass green on this table for 60 days, and if they don't have irrigation, it's going to go completely brown. So we just had conversations with St. Louis Park. They do sod, but I think from a staff standpoint, we're burning out my staff. This is, the contractors are not good, and they can't be babysitting seed contractors all summer. That's what, I've had two people, that's basically all they've done. So we might go to sod from a triple bottom line standpoint and just staff retention because we might lose people over this issue. So we'll have a bigger discussion with council later this fall.
You think it through, but you may want to come to us and see, maybe we need to hire somebody that just specializes in that work, and that's what they do, because we've got so many of these street reconstruction projects. As we methodically work our way through our town to make sure we take care of what we own together, I think it's important to be doing it right. So thanks for that update today. Appreciate it. All right, that takes care of community comment for tonight, except for what happened a couple of weeks ago, as I mentioned earlier. Usually, we have the city manager do a little bit of research among staff and come back and tell us what their response is going to be to community comments that were made at the prior meeting, and I'll turn now to manager Neil to see if he has any comments he wants to make.
I do. Thank you, your honor, members of council. We had two speakers at our August 16th council meeting. One, the first speaker was here to talk to us about traffic snarls that were occurring in her neighborhood related to the pedestrian bridge being damaged that day, and I think she just had, didn't have the right timing about when she found out that that happened versus what she was experiencing. So we had a chance to explain that, and that worked fine. Our second speaker was here representing Crossview Lutheran Church, and he was giving voice to a request that they have shared with the city council before about the placement of a new multi-use trail. Mr. Milner and I have had a discussion about that, and we're going to truncate that project this year at their property. So we are going to, Mr. Milner's going to take another look at that to see how important it is that it be on that particular side of the road, take some time in the design, and get it back to that in the spring and summer of '23. So, and the church is aware of that decision, so we... So we're just sharing that with you tonight, too.
All right. Good. Thank you for that. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any word from MNDOT about the timing of the new pedestrian bridge?
We don't.
But we're continuing to talk to them?
We are.
Okay. Thank you.
Good. Thanks for that. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. And there's several items on the consent agenda. A few of the council members have asked us to remove item 6M, which is the potential approval of a water bill credit for the street reconstruction projects at Melody Lake, Creek Knoll, and 58th Street, broadly called the Melody Lake Project. So we're going to pull that one, which is M, as in Mary. Does any other council member wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda, other than 6M? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6M?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Member Staunton, and second by Member Jackson, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item 6M. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. Now let's turn to 6M, and I'm going to turn to Councilmember Anderson, who will lead us off on a little dialogue here about that water bill credit and the proposal from staff, and whether we think that's the place we want to be.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Thank you. Actually, in removing this matter from consent, I thought it an opportunity to have a discussion, an open discussion. Director Milner was very, very helpful in that regard. So he got really a little bit ahead of this matter on consent. So I think what's left for us is really to take a look at the water bill credit on the Melody Lake, Creek Knoll, and 58th Street neighborhoods. And I think Member Pierce actually identified some issues that he had in touring. I certainly had those. And I think almost everybody on this council has walked the neighborhood and seen it. And yeah, I think that the right term is embarrassing. The contractor let us down, and without fail, without question. And whatever recourse there is, Director Milner's resources are being directed to correcting it. However, what we're left with here then tonight is the water bill credit. Because what I know for sure is, is that most of the residents over there have really been working, Mr. Nun mentioned this earlier, have been working tirelessly to try to reconstruct their lawns. Some of them have laid sods, some have reseated. There's been an awful lot of weeding, crabgrass is growing in, so on. So I guess as we look at this credit, I think what we should have a discussion of as a council is, is this an adequate amount? And are we satisfied that going forward that we have it corrected? Director Milner's given us some assurances to that end. So from that point forward, I guess it's, how do we make this a little more right for the people who have been affected?
Why don't you comment on what's being recommended to?
Excuse me. Thank you.
What we've discussed is $100 water bill credit for all the residents in the assessment
area. Again, that's the Melody Lake area.
Member Pierce, any thoughts along this line as to whether that's a number? I think Director Milner did, you know, a good job of trying to quantify it as opposed to just divining it out of nowhere, the notion that maybe $100 was appropriate, because he looked at water bills, and most folks had about a $50 variable that he looked at from the prior year. I know when I personally asked the nuns to send me their water bill, the differential was about $100 from last year to this year. So when I thought about water usage, seed purchasing, because I talked to many people that had done that, the sod purchasing that some folks had done, the labor, and then just the hassle factor, it made me wonder whether $100 was enough. And you may have some thoughts on that as well, having been out there.
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I like the way that you described it. The $100 credit for water doesn't really address all the other efforts that have been going into addressing the issue. And so I guess I would say two things. One, I think Director Milner is definitely closer to this than we are. His team for sure is. And to hear Director Milner say, in order, it takes two years, right, to really establish whether you're seeding or you're sodding. And so we're going to continue to need the residents to help, right? If they don't do that, then we could still end up in a similar position than we are today. And so I think that that warrants some consideration. And when we were out there, you mentioned neighbors, some neighbors have sodded. There is an example where a neighbor painstakingly hand-weeded and laid, did their own seeding, laid burlap on top of it, did the watering. And that particular lawn, you can see the grass is really doing well. But that was something that that neighbor did all on their own as well, and wasn't asking us to do anything, right, from a compensation perspective either. And so when I think about those issues, it feels like a credit more than $100 would make sense to me. And whether that's, you know, 150 or more, right, that, to me, that feels like more the discussion, what would be the appropriate number.
Councilmember Jackson, or Councilmember Staunton, thoughts on, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do like the idea of 150, because there's been a lot of grief in addition to the water. I just want to make it perfectly clear that this is to remedy this particular situation. It's not for future projects. Hopefully, we'll go much more smoothly than this, and we're not going to, every time we have a street reconstruction, you know, give water, because it is, it is, it is hard work, no matter what, to keep that grass growing. But this year has been particularly bad. And I know the neighbors have just really had to put up with a lot of grief in this particular situation. So I would favor $150 for the Melody Lake Project.
Member Staunton, any thoughts? No? Okay. Member Anderson or Member Pierce, how does Member Jackson's proposal sound to you?
$150 is certainly 50% higher than the credit that we were considering.
Well, several of us have been out there, I think, multiple times. And, you know, two doors down from where, Mr. Nun, I hope you don't mind me using you as an example, but we did meet out there, and you were gracious enough to visit with me, you and your wife. The person on the corner of Melody Lake and Code must have spent hundreds and hundreds of dollars on sod, because that corner lot is just perfect, and it's just, it's gorgeous. And I'm sure Mr. Nun did as well, and he didn't ask for anything for the sod. But when you think about, as I said, water usage, seed purchasing, sod purchasing, the labor that went into it, and then just kind of the all-summer-long hassle factor, and we all saw how tall those weeds were and how difficult it was to deal with. And this gets to be a little bit subjective, but I was thinking that $200 seemed like the better number to me, and more reflective of what people had to go through. And that's not going to be inexpensive. You know, it's a significant number when you aggregate it. But nonetheless, I think it's appropriate that we do it in this, as Member Jackson points out, this isolated sort of circumstance. It's not presidential in my mind, and I don't intend it to be presidential, but I do think in this circumstance, we've got some flexibility here in what we can do as a community.
I definitely, I would support that, Mr. Mayor. I also liked Councilmember Jackson's point. This is, this is a one-off. And I can promise you, I've not spoken to every neighbor in that community, but they would prefer that we had done this right the first time than getting a credit. And so I think we have to do both of those things. We have to ensure that what we're currently doing makes the mark, addresses the issue. And then I think I would support a $200 credit as well.
Would someone care to make a motion to approve a water bill credit for street reconstruction projects in the Melody Lake, Creek Knoll, and 58, West 58th Street neighborhoods for $200 per residential property unit related to the work in 2020 and 2021?
So moved. Second.
All right. Good. A motion by Member Anderson, second by Member Pierce, to approve a $200 water bill credit for those named street reconstruction projects that were performed in 2020 and 2021. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. Thank you. Thanks for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
And, yeah, we'll get her all done, get her done the right way, the Adana way.
Your Honor, we will take a look at the logistics of how this is going to work from a credit standpoint on the utility bill, and we'll do a communication out to everybody in this neighborhood so they know what's going on.
Oh, thank you, Manager Neil. All right. That concludes the work on the consent portion of the agenda. We've got two public hearing matters this evening, and Director Milner's got the first matter, and that is a potential approval of a right-of-way easement vacation at 5304 Whiting Avenue. And because it is an easement vacation, it is a necessary public hearing. And I think what Director Milner's going to propose is that we take testimony this evening and leave the public hearing open until noon on September 12th, and then continue it to action on the September 20 city council agenda. So Director Milner, would you like to lead us through this matter?
Yeah. Thank you. There's a consideration of vacation of easements at 5304 Whiting Avenue, embodied in Resolution 2022-79. The application came in, and currently there is two lots there, and they have buildings across both. It's the old greenhouse area, and they would like to vacate that hatched area that's crossing both lots. It's an old utility easement based on the original plat. We don't need it for any utility purposes. The private utilities do not need it, and we would recommend that you vacate it. But first, let's hear all the public testimony. And like the mayor said, let's close the public hearing at noon on September 12th, and then continue action here on September 20th. I stand for any questions at this time.
Questions for Director Milner with regard to this proposed vacation? All right, folks, I'm going to open this up to public testimony here momentarily, but if you're listening online or watching online, and you want to call in to testify, don't forget the 800 number is 888-504-7949, and the participant passcode 949937, 949937. There it is on the screen. Again, press star one to speak to the operator, and then they'll get you into Ms. Bears, and she'll bring you into the council. So let's now open this matter up for, let me first of all ask, or did I already ask, any council members have questions for Director Milner? Okay. Let's open this matter up as a public hearing. And is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this matter? Okay. All right. Let's go, Ms. Bears, to the online folks. Is there anyone waiting in the queue to testify regarding this matter?
I do not currently have any callers.
All right. Very good. We will have an opportunity for those folks to provide testimony if we adopt the motion that Director Milner's proposing. And let me ask, is there a colleague of, one of our colleagues that wishes to move to close the public hearing on this matter at noon on September 12th, and continue the action to the September 20, 2022 city council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, and Member Pierce seconds, that we close the public hearing at noon on September 12, 2022, and continue the action with respect to this requested right-of-way easement vacation at 5304 Whiting Avenue to the September 20 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. All right. And we've got, the next matter is involving the old public worksite. I can't help but think of Member Staunton when I see the old public worksite comes up, because he was part of that original team of 52 people that came up with the guiding principles on what to do with this property. And we're going to hear something about that tonight.
He was a teenager then.
Yeah. So I'm going to turn now to Manager Neil, who's going to introduce the topic. And then Bill Nuenendorf, our economic development manager, and Kerry Teague, our community development director, are going to make their presentation. And then we've got a presentation coming from United Properties, and Terry Minarik from Confluence, and Brian Larson from Pope Design as well. So let's go to Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of council. I'll be brief. This is a piece of land that we have been working with for at least the past decade and probably decade and a half. It may be the most studied three acres of land in Adana, in a lot of ways. I wouldn't be surprised if we started to count. That'd be well over 1,000 hours of council, staff, and community time that's been dedicated to this, and probably close to $1 million in terms of studies that we have put into this site. And we've tried all kinds of different development schemes, all kinds of different public-private, private-public, shared space, recreation space, retail space, lots of different kinds of residential developments here. It's been, it's been a real adventure in getting to this stage. And this is as far as this redevelopment has gotten in the last 12 years, at least since I've been, since I've been here. So we are proud to share this with you tonight. And Mr. Nuenendorf is going to give a little bit more of a detailed view of the history. And then we will get right to the project that we are looking for, for your, for your support for tonight. So, Mr. Nuenendorf.
Thank you, Manager Neil. Nuenendorf, welcome.
Great. Thank you. Bill Nuenendorf, the city's economic development manager, and the development manager for this particular project. As Manager Neil mentioned, this is, by our count, the 10th concept that's been studied for this site. Each of the concepts, including this one, has been founded in the seven guiding principles that were adopted for this district, initially put together back in 2010, and then formally adopted in 2012. So along the way, there's been over a decade of public engagement, public input, as Manager Neil has mentioned, activities ranging from large group exploration sessions and discovery sessions back in 2014 and 2015, focus groups, at least three different community advisory task forces that were put together. We collected a lot of engagement directly through engagement at Jerry's Foods in the lobby, at OLG, talking to the neighbors, talking to the businesses in that area, collected data and input on the old Speak Up Adana platform. If you're newer to the council or the community, you might not remember that particular platform, but we used that engagement tool for about four years. And more recently, we've switched to that Better Together Adana platform, does a similar thing, but does it a little bit better. So there's been a lot of input and ideas and suggestions that we've explored. On the screen, I have just a quick rendering of the nine different concepts that we've explored in the past. Some we explored very quickly. They were not well received, and we kept moving. Others, on other occasions, we thought we were really on the right track, and we started going deep and hard to understand how we could build a community center, a mixed-use building, mixed-use parking garage, rooftop, park on top of parking, housing of different types. We've considered office and retail. A number of different things were explored. Each one of these previous concepts met the same fate. They didn't work. Financially, they were not viable. Or socially, they weren't, the community wasn't interested. So perhaps one of the outcomes of COVID was that we took a break from this planning for a couple of years and retooled. And we picked up the pieces, and we thought, again, what did work? Of all the different pieces, you know, some of them did work. So how can we put the right pieces back together? And one of the lessons that we had learned was that our dreams were very large, the site is not, and parking is very expensive. So as our visions for a larger and larger project grew, our parking costs grew. And at some point, we realized that people aren't going to pay for that parking. So one of the things we thought was, let's dial it back a little bit. We don't necessarily have to build the biggest project on this site, or the most expensive project, but instead, going back to those seven guiding principles, looking at a project that creates a space for the community, that leverages what might be an obstacle, like a railroad track that's... leverages what might be an obstacle, like a railroad track that splits up your whole business district by putting a pedestrian bridge over it, or by some of the concerns about an ugly parking structure that's only used during parts of the day, leveraging, leveraging that parking structure to be used at other times of the day when it's empty. You can save a lot of money if we use a facility that's already there. So in the proposal that, that's in front of you this evening, we believe that we did pick the best pieces and put them together in a, in a new fashion. It's a little bit smaller in scale, but we think it works. For the last year, we've worked extensively, had a lot of conversations through the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, looking at the deal, the real estate deal. And at this point in time, the HRA, which owns the property, is under contract with United Properties Residential to build the Senior Housing Cooperative that's on the southern edge of the site, and we're under contract with Jester Concepts to build a restaurant that's in the middle of the site. The northern portion, of course, would be retained by the city. The HRA would essentially build the park. When it's finished, we would turn that over to the city to be part of the Park and Recreation Department. So this evening, we have our full team in attendance. What we plan to present is very similar to what we shared at the Planning Commission. So we've got the full team to walk through that, and of course, we're always here for your questions. But just as, as a reminder, Dave Anderson is with us from Frond Shoe Company. Frond Shoe's been engaged on this from the earliest days. They wear different hats as we looked at different concepts, but tonight, they're here as a representative that helped put some of our partners together. They helped us select United Properties out of the field of housing developers. They helped us select Jester Concepts out of a field of restaurant and hospitality operators. From United Properties, Alex Hall is the senior representative for that, for that element, and Brent Frederick with Jester Concepts is here to represent the restaurant. Terry Minaric is going to, is who I will turn it over to. The city hired Terry's group, the Confluence Design, to work on the landscape of the site, and to make sure that these three individual pieces all tie to, all tie together. We also have Jordan Brookins from Shea, who did the restaurant design, Brian Larson and his team from Pope Architect that worked on the housing, and Vicky Vandell with Lauks Associates that did all the engineering work. A lot of things that aren't as glamorous, but the site has to work. So with that, I will turn it over to Terry to walk through the, or actually, I'll turn it over to Carrie, my apologies, who'll walk through it, and then we'll go to Terry Minaric.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Nuenendorf. And welcome, Director Teague.
Thank you. We can't forget the zoning and the request. No problem. Okay, so we'll just get right to it. So the site is currently zoned planned industrial, which coincides with the previous use, the old public worksite. It's guided in our comprehensive plan as mixed-use center, similar to basically the entire Grandview District. Density that's allowed here is up to 100 units an acre. As mentioned in all of the planning that's gone in with this site, there was always something that was anticipated to be public use on the site, whether it be a building, or building and/or park. So they did go through the sketch plan, whoops, and they've made a number of changes from the sketch plan. They've reduced the number of parking stalls in the senior facility. They've created more architecture to the building. We're basically just looking at blocks, added landscaping all around, connections to the sidewalks, trees along the plaza. So here is the specific request. So this would be developed in two phases. The first phase would be the six-story, 86-unit senior co-op. 10% of the units would be for affordable housing. That would be nine units. The second phase would be the two-story restaurant in the middle, about 13,000 square feet, about 350 parking stalls, or 350 seats in the restaurant, and, and then the, the park on the north end, which would be about 31,000 square feet. That Phase Two would still require site plan review by the Planning Commission and City Council. So once the restaurant is ready to go, we would come back and go through that process at that time. Just a quick, few pictures of the project, and again, the applicant will go through that in a little more detail. So this request requires a rezoning to planned unit development. So we're creating a zoning ordinance specifically for this site. That rezoning includes an overall development plan. As I mentioned, it's a two-phase development. They're requesting flexibility to vary from setbacks, building height, building material, number of parking stalls, and floor area ratio requirements. And the PUD zoning ensures that the affordable housing would get developed within the project. So this graphic indicates the flexibility that we're requesting in terms of the setback. There'd be a five-foot setback on Eden and a five-foot setback on Arcadia, 10-foot setback on the west lot line. That's toward the railroad tracks for both of the structures. This, this district has a four-story, 48-foot height limitation. This would be six and a half stories, and also requesting, I'm not sure why the, the bottom is showing there, but a variance for the parking stalls as well, because we're relying on the, the Jerry's ramp for the parking. So a quick review of the site plan, access. Access to the site is off of the, the south and the north. Access to the restaurant off of Arcadia here, in boulevard trees that would separate the pedestrian pathways. Note the reconfiguration here to accommodate the new roundabout. This is where some of those setbacks got tight with the, with the bump out here of the property. So there's a five-foot setback, and also a five-foot setback to the south. And I apologize, I'm not sure if you're not seeing that on the whole bottom there. I don't know how to get rid of that. I guess we could close each one of them? Oh, there.
Yeah, now you're good.
Perfect.
Okay.
Great, thank you. So you can, the, the five-foot setback here on the south end, note that the building is angled to the lot. The, the load-in to the west is parallel to the street, so the setback, the building appears closer. You can see that this would step in, so there's more green space compared to that building to the west. But again, it is a five-foot setback, but it's just at these, these points. Building materials, again, the applicant will go through that in a little more detail. One of the principles within the Grandview framework talked about buildings not exceeding the height of the existing Jerry's Tower. So this graphic on the, on the top shows the Jerry's Tower, and that the, the six-story building would not exceed, exceed that Jerry's Tower. So primary issue to consider here is the proposal reasonable to justify the PUD rezoning. Staff believes that it is. The uses here that are proposed are consistent with the comprehensive plan, and also the surrounding zoning, which is primarily a planned commercial district. Public space makes up 23% of the site. That restaurant and park building are intended to blend together, so the park may appear to be a little bit larger with that green space in front of the restaurant. Pedestrian experiences are enhanced along both Eden and Arcadia, again, with the, with the, with the boulevard-style sidewalk with trees in the boulevard. Also, that, that bridge over the railroad tracks, which is currently under construction, would be utilized for the parking in the Jerry's ramp. Project would help us achieve our goals of the Met Council in providing affordable housing. We believe that the PUD criteria is met. Again, this is a horizontal mixed-use, where the uses working together. The restaurant would attract people to the area, and the proposed park on the north end creates a more efficient and creative use of the property. The existing roadways and parking would be supported by the project. SEH conducted a traffic and parking study. Erin Jordan is with us this evening, and she's online to answer any questions that you may have. But the study concluded that there's about 215 extra parking stalls in the Jerry's ramp that would be utilized during those peak times for the restaurant. So the conclusion is the, that the parking ramp would support, would support the restaurant. Staff is recommending approval of the project, subject to the findings and conditions that are included in the resolution. The Planning Commission considered this, and their, their, it was a 3-3 split on their vote. Those that were opposed wanted to see more on the site. They just felt that we could do more, especially with a, you know, there was all the talk previously of a, a public building. They just wanted to see more. We didn't have a lot of comment on Better Together, but the comments, the comments that we did receive, one liked the project, one felt that the restaurant was too big, and another was concerned about existing traffic, not so much from the project, but existing today. The recommendation this evening is to close the public hearing on September 12th at noon, and then continue action to September 20th. And as Mr. Nuenendorf mentioned, the, the development team is here to make a full presentation as well. And I will stop there. We can answer any questions.
All right. Questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Yes, Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Director Teague, will this be subject to, to our green building policy as well, since it's a PUD?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I don't know if this goes to you or Mr. Nuenendorf, but it seemed to me that when we talked about this as the HRA, there's some air rights so that the, the housing will continue to have access to that green space. Are they connected by an easement of any sort with a view, or am I not remembering that correctly?
You are remembering that correctly. Well, well, I remember it correctly is the question. Yes, there are provisions in the sales contracts with both Jester and United Properties to ensure that, from the city perspective, that there's always a smaller building on the restaurant pad. If that would burn down in 50 years and something gets rebuilt, for a certain period of time, a number of decades, it would be smaller in scale to ensure that the park is green and sunny, and similarly, to ensure that there is not a skyscraper built where the restaurant is, which now would block the view from the senior co-op units. So there are provisions in the sales contracts. As we proceed with the land transaction, we would document that with a, with a recorded easement, but that has not happened yet.
Okay, thank you. Because I think one of the questions the Planning Commission had was, well, these are three separate things, they're not coordinated, but through the sales contract and, and the property rights, they are connected. So maybe not through zoning, but definitely through, through the arrangements we've made in the, in the overall picture.
That's exactly correct. Each one of these could not stand on its own. They're all interconnected. The driveway for the, the inbound driveway for the restaurant is also the out by, or the, for the, they share driveways. So they share parking, they share delivery access, garbage access. They use some of, some city parking. We use some of their parking. We share a lot of easements, and there's been a lot of attention to detail in both the site plan and the real estate agreements that, that relate to this property.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I would add to that, that there are protections in the zoning as well. That's one of the benefits of a PUD. You would be, if this is approved, you would be adopting an overall development plan that, that says that there's a two-story restaurant on that middle piece. If that were to ever change, they would need an amendment to that zoning ordinance that requires that specific building.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Good question. Thank you. Anyone else at this point in time? All right, let's bring up Mr. Minaric. Mr. Minaric, nice to have you back with us.
Yes, thank you.
You look the same as you did before COVID. That's a compliment, I think.
I hope so, because I am aging. Terry Minaric with Confluence, Principal over Minneapolis Office. This may work on here. Once again, we have this, this freeze. I might need to add. I'm just going to go a few closer. It just seems like. I think I will go back to the pointer. Great. Yes, thank you for having us. I'm going to quickly flip through a lot of these slides, because you've seen a lot of these images. But what Bill was referring to is a great segue of, you know, how this property is divided into three separate developments. We have the co-op, we have the restaurant, and we have this park space. But the reality of it is, is that's more of the legal description, the ownership description of how people are going to operate this. But when we designed this site, we thought of it holistically, and how it could all blend together to create this district within Grandview. Point number seven in the Grandview key components talks about creating a unique space, an innovative-type space, a space that is kind of at the heart of the community, that provides nature, provides the opportunity for flexibility and activation and those sorts of things as well. And I think that although this may not be a grandiose central park, or a very large space that's overly programmed and overly developed and has all kinds of activities, it does create a respite within the heart of the Grandview District that provides a lot of opportunity for this part of the community to be able to gather, socialize, partake in events, and just kind of get away from the built architecture that exists today within the community. A lot of people, when they try to create a park space, they try to activate it, and programming is so critical, and we've heard that a lot going through this whole discussion. The one thing that always comes up when we try to activate park spaces is, we need something to generate activity. Let's put a restaurant there. Let's put some other kind of activity there. Well, we're very fortunate to have this restaurant associated with it. And when we present this, we kind of see it as, yes, there's this park space, but we also see the restaurant space as being a synergy and a blend between it. And that restaurant almost becomes that social activation of the park. It's something that people look for when they go to develop a park, to have that one key iconic element within that area to be able to draw people. And that's, that's something that's really critical. I know, talking to the Parks Commission, talking to the Park Board, and talking to the, the Parks staff, the bandwidth of the Park staff to be able to take care of a large-scale, highly-programmed park is not there. So when we looked at this, we looked at something that could provide that respite space, could provide that sense of nature within the heart of a built environment, and not be overly complicated for them to be able to take care of, not be able to cost a vast amount of monies in maintenance and those sorts of things, and also look for those partnerships of the restaurant, of the co-op, of the Grandview District to activate it and to innovate it. And I will show you some ideas as we go through this that we quickly put together. I'm sorry, it's not in your packet. I sent it to Bill today, but I just wanted to kind of show you some possible opportunities for what we could do. As we, you know, I'll flip forward here to kind of the main stuff. We talked about the three districts. We talked about the overhaul cohesiveness of the plan. As you know, this site transitions 20-plus feet from the pedestrian bridge crossing down to the corner of Arcadia and Eden. With that, it's very challenging to kind of create something that could blend all together. So one of the key ideas that we developed here was to input nature into a lot of parts of this, and with that, a sense of terracing. So as the fill begins to, you know, transition from one side of the site to the other, this creates an opportunity for a very safe environment that's not sunken or hidden. Bryant Park in New York's a great example. At one time, it was slightly elevated from the street. It was the home of, you know, drugs and derelicts and all kinds of crime. Once they made it at street level, activated the edges, made the perimeters more visible, it became a more functional, more peaceful park. Now, that goes along with New York's whole revitalization, but at the same time, those are the principles of activating the space. So with this, we tried to do the same thing by elevating or filling in that part of the site. And as you know, as the co-op happens, that fill begins to get used to kind of progress the site. So we moved from co-op to restaurant to park to the pedestrian crossing. So with this, we created a series of terraces. These terraces create rooms. These terraces create opportunities for a variety of different activity. We've introduced nature to be able to buffer some of the railway track area, buffer also the parking structure, not to say that the parking structure couldn't have a facelift to look a little better, but we create these pockets of opportunity to introduce nature into an urban, urban core, and that kind of moves throughout the site. Even in the parking lot, we tried to get as much planting as we possibly could. And then as we moved down Arcadia towards Eden, we've activated the And then as we move down Arcadia towards Eden, we've activated those edges with landscape pedestrian spaces. And as we move down to Eden, we have actual public spaces that are part of the co-op. And actually, the corner at the intersection of the roundabout has pedestrian seating areas and activation areas within it and public art opportunities as well. Here you can see some of those precedents of how we're trying to create the space, the terracing idea, the idea of creating this elevation and separation of rooms, the restaurant idea, the outdoor dining, socialization activation, and then the outdoor terraces and amenity decks of the co-op to be able to engage the park and engage the rest of the community as well. So it's not just this isolated building that sits internally, but focuses externally. Here again, the grade change that you're seeing on site. And then one of the things we talked about for activation within this park is something that's fairly simple, but we also didn't look at it from a point of view of it being too static. So in talking with Bill and actually meeting with the Arts Commission, right, Commission? We talked about these ideas of having art within this park that could begin to create this destination attraction. It's a very well-used activity for programming throughout parks throughout the United States. Clyde Warren Park, you know, Millennium Park has the Bean. There's a lot of variety of different spaces that have these iconic selfie moments that draw people to them. So when we looked at art, we didn't want it to be static. So some of the things we thought of, well, we want a pavilion for shade opportunity, creating a focal point for activity, maybe a small concert, people to sit and dine, maybe get out of some of the elements. So does this have to just be a typical shelter, or can it be an art piece? So one of the ideas we have here is that the shelter could be one of the art pieces, one of the attractions. The other thing we thought of was, yeah, there's a potential for static art, which just sits there, but also art that is more dynamic and moving, so interactive art, something you can engage yourself with, whether as you walk by it, it creates a sound of music or actually moves to the movement that you're creating as you go by it. And then the other idea of gateway, kind of this gateway sense of, you know, people being able to enter the park, enter the Grandview yard, cross across the pedestrian bridge into the area on the other side of the tracks, and this sense of gateway. Now, those are just some of the little ideas that we began to look at. We're hoping in the beginning to be able to introduce as part of this park, and maybe three to four of these ideas, and over time, they can be added to. The restaurant, as well as the co-op, has both provided opportunities within their spaces to actually add to this and put art onto the property as well and begin to activate this throughout. I'm going to quickly jump to this other idea of activation that we talked about, this presentation we did here. And how can we activate this small space, this space that's been asked to be activated many times as we've met here with Planning Commission and Council? One simple idea is movies in the park. This is a great synergy between people socializing. The restaurant, activity's outside. As we get to the restaurant, you'll see there's a grand outdoor pizza oven, it's part of this space, but movies in the park is just one idea that could happen here. It could be something as simple as on a formal lawn, or something as cool and unique as the bottom right picture, where we actually have sectioned off areas, almost like private little patios. And this was kind of done in China, or China or Japan as part of COVID, just to be able to separate people during COVID. But it created a really unique space. Another one is music in the park, whether that's a small orchestra or a small band playing. This could move anywhere from the upper lawn underneath the pavilion structure, down into the area associated with the restaurant. Another idea is an artisan day or local craft makers. This could happen once a week, it could happen once a month, maybe once a year, where we bring in local crafters, maybe there's themed nights and different things. One could be centered around food, one could be centered around pottery, one could be centered around jewelry, just kind of activating the space and once again, bringing people here, and the synergy between the restaurant and the activities in the restaurant and the park, and then the community around it would begin to activate the space. Another one is lawn games. It's pretty simple, it's pretty generic, but just being able to activate it with ideas like bags, kub, lawn bowling, spike ball. And in this scenario, we think badminton's a great idea for the upper lawn, because a shuttlecock, as you know, doesn't fly very far, as much as a tennis ball would or a volleyball. And so nobody's really in danger when somebody's playing badminton, but it just provides that sense of activation to the space as well. And then, of course, there's always yoga and exercise within the park. So the opportunity for the lawn to be able to be that, whether it's Tai Chi, whether it's yoga, whether it's some form of exercise, or Pilates, or anything that could happen out here. And then finally, and this is kind of our big vision, how do we activate in winter, right? We're a winter city. So looking at ideas, simple as maybe we create a sledding hill, we put straw bales around it for protection and kind of zone off that area, we put outdoor curling in, and then we also introduce the idea of snow sculptures and kind of building upon that art idea within this park space as well. And that iconic selfie moment, you can kind of see in the bottom left-hand corner, you know, this map of Minnesota with the snowshoes in front, creating this destination space. So those are just some of the ideas as far as activation that we think we could do within the space. And we hope that, you know, it stimulates you to see that it's more than just an open green space, and it's more than just some nature and a place to sit. A lot of variety of things could happen here, and in partnership with Jester and maybe other parts of the Grandview District, I think that that could easily be done. Once again, some of the images that you've seen, I'll flip through these quickly. I'll get to the three specific spots of the park that we're going to be talking about. So the first is the Grandview yard to the north. This is the space that we was talking about activating. Once again, building on this concept of nature within the city, places for people to gather, have activities, go eat their lunch every day, and then maybe do some of the activities that we showed in some of that programming. We have as part of this, a transition, what we're calling a meander, that comes down off the pedestrian bridge and helps the ADA access from the pedestrian bridge down into the park. This creates areas and opportunities to sit within nature and engage within nature. The terracing provides us that opportunity to separate activities and people gathering. And then we have this larger open lawn. But with this grade change, we have this slope. So the slope begins to activate the lawn towards the actual restaurant activities. And then as part of the restaurant area, there is a larger kind of outdoor grassy area, kind of an open flexible space. You see the big pizza oven, and then as part of that, outdoor dining, outdoor seating, fire pits within the winter, those sorts of things as well. This kind of begins to create this synergy between these two spaces as it ties into the parking lot and the co-op to the south. You can see how we address Arcadia with access points in a variety of different ways for people to get into the park. There'd be a gateway closer to where the pedestrian bridge would be, but also the opportunity for branding and signage as well. The view back towards the co-op. And then for the restaurant, I'll let Brent come up and talk a little bit about that.
Well, let's hold on just a second, Mr. Menarck. If people may have questions or comments for you, council members, anything for Mr. Menarck at this point? Comments? I think you're really onto something with the Bryant Park comparative. I was out there in June, and all these activities were taking place there. I saw, I think it was five, six o'clock at night, 200 people were doing a yoga class at one end of the park. And at the other end of the park, it was a little musical group, and people were, benches everywhere, beautiful flowers everywhere. And then the next night, it was a, I don't know, there was a game on. They had a big screen TV on one end, a massive screen, and the park was packed with people watching. I think it was a National Hockey League playoff game in early June. And it was just a variety of uses that were just fantastic, and you suggested some of those things here, activate some of those spaces. Anyone else? Comments at this point in time? Okay, let's bring up Mr. Frederick.
I don't think I can follow that up, sorry. Good evening, everyone. Brent Frederick, 5108 Blake Road, South Edina. No one else mentioned their address, but I thought I should, just because I do live in this city, so. I think everyone before me has really done a great job of explaining the whole site. We're really excited to be a part of it. We've been a part of it from the very start, early on last, late last year, with David Franchu and Bill, and this has been not just a few iterations, this has been a lot of phone calls, a lot of meetings, a lot of Zooms, and I think what we've come up with is a really good foot forward, and we're excited. And I don't know if I have a ton more to add, other than something new to our development would be that outside kind of activation. I was really, I think I was pressed to try and incorporate some sort of food window, some sort of food supply, some sort of activation for the space. And the design just wasn't working for that food window to be. The kitchen was in the back, it just, things weren't working. It would have to have been up on the top level where it's just a private event space. So we created this outdoor hearth, this pizza oven, and kind of like this food counter or bar, if you want. And it really just kind of changed the whole kind of outlook of the outdoor space. And I think while this is maybe 75% there, it started to spur some other things that we'd love to get done with the space. But I think that can supply a lot of the activation for people that want to grab a slice, or grab a pizza, or grab an appetizer. I know there's rules with liquor, especially being compact and contiguous, and that's why we have our green space too. But I think on the food side, I think we're really excited to be able to have people walk from the park into our space and have it be one. I think that's really what we talked about last time I was here. I mean that, I want that to happen. We're going to make sure that we have pathways for people to walk through. And to be able to walk through a park while people are eating, I think there's something fun about that, so. I'm here to answer any questions, if you guys like, but I think that's all I have to add.
Thanks, Mr. Frederick. Questions for Mr. Frederick at this point in time? Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you. When we talked at Sketch Plan, we talked about being able to walk easily from place to place. I see you added that in there. It's very nice, so I wanted to thank you for that.
Yeah, you bet.
Anyone else? Okay, standby. We may have something pop up yet.
Yeah, please, let me know.
Okay, all right. Are we going to hear from Mr. Hall as well?
I'm passing it out to Brian here.
All right.
Although I think you'll get your chance.
All right, Mr. Larson.
I'm Brian Larson with Pope Design Group.
And your business address, Mr. Larson?
Boy, we just moved. This is going to be a tough one. It's Eustace Street in St. Paul. I can give you, let's see, the address.
Close enough.
767 Eustace Street, St. Paul.
All right. Thank you.
I'll just address the senior co-op, and I'll try to do it fairly briefly. It's substantially in the same place, and the plan sort of functions as you saw it last. I'd like to emphasize two things, how we responded to some of the comments we heard from you and from the planning commission, and how we developed the additional development and articulation of the building since you last saw it. I'll move us ahead here. The senior co-op's a unique kind of housing, and Mr. Hall can talk to that in much more detail than I can, but it's the first new senior co-op, I believe, for generations here in Edina. And it's a special type of housing. The general plan configurations we show here, just to remind you how the building's organized, is the lower level that you see in gray in the upper left is a parking level access from Eden, and it's for the residential parking. And on that, on the east side, is five levels of housing. Then when we move up a level, there's a second level of parking, and on that level is five levels of housing. So there's always five levels of housing over parking, because there's two levels. We have a six-level and a seven-level side to the building, which results in the lower right-hand corner is a sixth floor that is higher than the rooftop of the fifth and has a rooftop deck. Some of the changes that we did in response to some of our comments is that we really worked on articulating the Eden, the most public sides, the Eden and the Arcadia side. You can see the building on the right sort of indents itself from that curving street on Arcadia, but what we've done is we set it back two feet further than previously. We had a five-foot setback, it's now seven feet. So the entire building was squeezed back. Then we introduced new entrances from the building to Arcadia with stairs coming down, and those in turn are also indented, and that's what you see on the right-hand side of the plan, further articulation. When we get to the top level of that Arcadia side, we have pushed that top level back another eight feet. So what we've done is continued to step the building back as we face Arcadia. As Terry pointed out, all of this east side and curving around to the south side is met with terracing that comes down and meets the pedestrian realm. And then the additional articulation that we've done is on the corners of the building, we have recessed balconies generally on all the public sides of the building, and those balconies are generous and exaggerated on the corners to sort of de-massify, if that's a word, the corners of the building. I'll quickly get to some of the materials, I think, that we have looked at, and as we develop the elevations, the top elevation is the east elevation, the one we mentioned facing Arcadia. You can see the terracing, the recesses, the stairways that connect to the street. The west elevation, you see both sides of the parking garage, and this is the side facing the railroad tracks. The south elevation on the top is the one facing Eden, so on the left is a residence parking garage entrance. And then, as Terry mentioned, we developed a park or a plaza of sorts on the south side facing Eden. And what we wanted to do is activate Eden more, so we took amenities that were interior in the space in the building and brought them out to the street to align the parking garage where it faces Eden. And that presents a sort of storefront of sorts, and that's what you see there. And we created an outdoor space at the sidewalk and the pedestrian. Finally, on the north side, that's the side facing the restaurant, and you get a sense of how the two levels present themselves. That's the guest parking on the right and the rooftop deck. Terms of materials, substantially, it's a precast stone, aeroscraft-like stone. We have two different colors, and so what we were using those colors to emphasize different areas. It's a more solid base, it turns into a grid above. Within the grid, we have metal panel and glass at the units. And you can see the deeper recesses and the articulation. Here you see the top balcony on that pushed back on the fifth floor on the east side. On the undersides of all the rooftops is a wood look metal soffit, and also on the undersides of balcony, so that's yet another accent material that you would see, and we see that in our renderings, as a pedestrian. Finally, we have a form liner textured concrete for the parking structure with linear polycarbonate windows that add visualist interest and would light up at night and do the same. Our section gives you that sense of the underground parking and that south plaza that faces Eden on the ground level, and we have our amenity south plaza, finally, our entrance north plaza, and our rooftop deck. We have four renderings here that I think you've probably seen, but they give you an idea of how it sits on the site, how it relates to the park and the restaurant. It shows how that terracing comes from the building down to the corner, that prominent corner that could be an art feature that we're showing there, and that south-facing plaza that we mentioned earlier. This is our north rendering. You can see the restaurant in the foreground. That's our public court, our public entrance to the building and for guests. And this is a street level, which gives you more of that idea of where the wood is visible and how that works as an accent to the rest of the design. Finally, this is Our Lady of Grace driveway looking north, right at Eden. And you can see that storefront and plaza that we talked about that's adjacent to the public street. And with that, I'll conclude and answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Larson? The one thing that I've forgotten to ask, you're at six and a half stories, and I've been assuming all along this is, I think, what you'd call post-tension construction? It's not the five over one, it's not a concrete base with stick built above?
It is.
It is stick-built but above?
It's stick-built. It's five over two on the west side and five over one on the east side.
Okay. Well, all right. I encourage you to, the way we encourage the people down at Nolan Mainz, who are at six stories, to think about post-tension construction versus concrete with stick built above. I think you, it's worthy of consideration, even though you've got more cost in it, you're going to get a lot better sound deadening, and it's the most expensive apartment building in the Twin Cities, I'm told, and they're 97% leased up, and people are really happy with it. So that's one thing I would worry about is noise transmission. I'm sure in your world, you've tried to figure out how to deal with that, with these, with using, still using lumber on a building like this. With a building of this quality, it seems to me it ought to all be concrete, but that's my personal opinion.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Larson at this point in time? Any other questions for Mr. Larson at this point in time? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
And who else are we going to hear from on the applicant side? Anybody? Okay, thanks, Mr. Nundorf. All right, this is a public hearing matter. Let's get that phone number up on the screen so folks that are watching in can call in when the time is right. But let's first now open it to public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this proposal? All right, I'm hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward. I'm going to turn now to Ms. Bears. Anybody online that we?
We do currently have one caller, but they have not yet indicated a desire to speak. Caller, if you'd like to speak, please press star one on your keypad to be entered into the queue.
Caller, there's your ID, conference ID number, if you wish to speak. Nothing?
They still have not indicated a desire to speak.
No indication?
No.
All right. Well, if you follow the recommendation of our economic development manager, Mr. Nundorf, and Mr. Teague, our community development director, we would be leaving this open for opportunity for supplemental testimony until noon on September 12th. In fact, if there are no questions from council members on a follow-on basis, is there a motion to close the public hearing on this matter at noon on September 12th, 2022, and continue the action to the September 2022 city council meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Member Jackson, a second by Member Pierce.
One moment. I do have a caller now that has entered the queue to speak.
All right.
Operator, will you please unmute the line of our first caller?
The line is now open.
All right. For the caller, would you please give us your name and address, and we'll have three minutes for your testimony, and we'll let you know when you're running close to the time. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Marilyn Listfinn. I'm at 5509 Highland Road, and I'm getting an echo. My question is to, with regard to the low-cost housing portion, I am concerned that there was on Seventieth and France Development, a low-cost housing portion which got nuked later on in the development. What is to prevent that from happening in this development?
All right. Thank you for that question. We'll answer that when we finish up here. Anything else, Ms. McFinn? Okay, we'll get to that question momentarily. Thanks for calling in.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone further, Ms. Bears?
I do not have anyone further.
All right, very good. We have a motion, a second on the table, to close the public hearing in this matter at noon on September 12th and continue the action to the September 20 city council meeting. Any further discussion with regard to the motion stated? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And then for Ms. McFinn, Manager Nundorf, do you want to answer that question?
Yes, regarding the affordable units in the building, there's two ways that the units would be delivered or required. One is through the PUD. It is a condition of approval that they include the units in the property. And secondly, is in the real estate contract. If they don't deliver the units as part of the real estate contract, they will not, we will not sell them the land. So we've got two different ways to make sure we get the units delivered in this project.
All right, good. Ms. McFinn, if you're listening in, thanks for the question, and I think you heard the answer from Manager Nundorf about the belt and suspenders approach the city took on affordable housing here. All right. Thank you, everybody that's involved in this project. Nice to have you here. And then we'll move on to the next matter. That closes up the public hearing portion of the agenda, and we'll move on to reports and recommendations. And the first matter in front of us in this portion of the agenda is Resolution 2022-80, accepting donations. We need a four-fifths vote on this by state law to accept a donation from citizens or organizations. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-80?
Still moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Member Jackson, a second by Member Pierce, to adopt Resolution 2022-80, which would accept certain defined donations embodied in the resolution on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-80, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And so in this resolution, we have a gift to the Park and Rec Department. These are all Park and Rec Department gifts from the Edina Friends at the Library, $1,000; from Jane Fugner, $25; Edina Community Members Friends of the Miller Family, led by Tracy Lumpkin, $3,550 for a park bench and a tree at Normandale Park; and the Edina Friends at the Library donation was for the Edina Senior Center 20th Year Event. And of course, for Jane Fugner, it was the Mike Kelly Memorial at the Arts Center. And then Mia Montpass, $350 donation for a tree at Countryside Park, thanks to all those organizations and individuals in our community that cared enough to make a donation to our community, to better Edina. All right. And then the next matter in front of us is 8B, and that is a Resolution 2022-74, which potentially approves a right-of-way easement vacation at 7,001 France Avenue. Director Milner has this matter. We had a public hearing on it a couple weeks ago, and I'll turn to Director Milner now for any update, and then we'll consider the motion that the engineering director is recommending. Director Milner?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, the public hearing closed at noon on Monday. There was no public comments received for this easement vacation, so staff would recommend that you approve Resolution 2022-74, approving the right-of-way vacation at 7,001 France Avenue.
All right. Got prompt any questions from council members? All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-74, which approves the right-of-way easement vacation at 7,001 France Avenue?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Stanton moves. Member Jackson seconds. The motion to approve Resolution 2022-74, which would approve the right-of-way easement vacation at 7,001 France Avenue. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. Next matter is one that Director Teague has, that we also had a public hearing on, and this is potential preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan approval for Solheim Companies at 4,646 2077th Street. And I'll turn now to Director Teague. And I think we have some folks here, yeah, that are prepared to answer questions. Jason Lord from Solheim is here for questions, if we have any. Director Teague, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just to quickly summarize the project, they ask here is to rezone the property to PUD 23, which is the zoning district adjacent to the property that's currently under construction, basically phase one of this project. The project is a seven-story, 276-unit apartment. 10% of the units would be for affordable housing at 50% AMI. The remainder of the units would be between 70% and 120% AMI. In addition to those city benefits, one of the big benefits here is the connection to the Fred Richards Park, both with the woo nerf through the middle in between the new apartment and one of the existing office buildings, and then the direct vehicular connection to the Fred Richards Park as well. So staff and the planning commission, planning commission on a unanimous decision, is recommending that you approve the project, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the resolution. And as mentioned, Mr. Lord is here to answer any questions you might have.
Were there any follow-on comments on Better Together?
Yes, thank you for that. There were no additional comments.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mr. Lord is here as well. Council members have questions, either Director Teague or Mr. Lord? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So we had a discussion about the drainage and the back end of this project going on to Fred Richards. Can you kind of talk to me, just refresh my memory a little bit about what, how we're doing? I know it's a little bit higher than the park, but talk to me a little bit about how we transition into the park there.
Yes, thank you, Director Teague, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Jackson.
Would you identify yourself, too?
Oh, yes. I'm Jason Lord from Solheim Companies, here representing the project. I'm at, or Solheim Companies, 724 North First Street, Minneapolis.
Thank you.
So we've looked at the back to improve on flood storage area and to be mindful and pull back from the wetland boundary along the site. So we actually have done double duty since the sketch plan on that back corner, where we have a covered amenity area and pulled our lower building back so that we can create more flood storage and activate that back corner with the wetlands. So we've depressed that area along Fred Richards Park to match grades and blend in with the delineated wetland area, and then we've raised grade on to the east side as well.
Okay, terrific, thank you. And I guess my comment is, I just really want to stress the importance of using the green building policy on this. I just got back from a trip going to several other cities, and this is the future, and they're all going to be this, so you'll be one of the first to do this, and we're excited about that. So thank you.
I'm excited as well.
Thanks, Mr. Lord. Other questions for Mr. Lord or Director Teague? All right, stand by, Mr. Lord. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 2022-08 and grant first reading of it and adopt Resolution 2022-73, approving the preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan for Solheim Companies at 4,646 2077th Street West?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Stanton, a second by Member Jackson, that we approve ordinance number 2022-08 on a first reading basis and adopt Resolution 2022-73, approving preliminary rezoning and preliminary development plan for Solheim Companies for their project at 4,646 2077th Street West. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And then for council members, I would encourage folks to get ahold of Mr. Lord or Mr. Gunsbury. I had a tour out there a couple weeks ago, and it's really nice to see the existing project coming along and to see some of the things that they're talking about relative to the questions you've raised, Member Jackson, and how that interface is going to work with the park, so.
Absolutely. We would love to show anybody anytime around our project.
I think Thursdays is your day, isn't it, out there?
Thursday's the day, but I'll come down there anytime, so.
All right, very good. Thanks, Mr. Lord. All right, the next matter before us is 8D, which is ordinance 2022-10, which would be a potential amendment of Chapters 10 and 24 concerning residential tree protection. We got a presentation by John Haugen of the Energy and Environment Commission, and Grace Hancock is here as well this evening. So.
All right. Hello.
Welcome, Mr. Haugen. Nice to have you with us. Commissioner?
Thank you. It's good to be here. My name's John Haugen. I'm a member of the Energy and Environment Commission, and we are here to talk about our tree protection ordinance. This is for residential tree protection.
And your address, Mr. Haugen?
Sure, 5709 Beard Avenue South.
Thank you.
So we have a recommendation before you tonight to approve the revisions that we've recommended for the tree protection ordinance. There are two components: Chapter 10 revisions, which received full approval of both the Transportation Commission, Planning Commission, EEC, and staff. And then Chapter 24 revisions, which we take a neutral position on, but basically EEC recommended to approve, but staff recommended against the specific removal permits for boulevard trees, based on the reasons stated in their memo. How we got to this point, the EEC has been working on this since January. We had, we approved the revisions in August of this year. We consulted the other two commissions I mentioned, Transportation and Planning, a wide group of staff, including several folks here tonight, and then also seven other cities, both the foresters, in some cases, the Parks and Rec Department, and then their ordinance as well. So this is, a lot of research has gone into this. The current state of tree protection in Edina, we have an ordinance that was passed in 2014, minor revisions in 2019. The net result of it at this point is it does not protect our tree canopy very well. Developers still sort of do as they please with properties. There is not much of a deterrent to clearcutting a lot before making a major renovation to a home or tearing down a home and redeveloping the site. There's also trouble with enforcement of the current ordinance, and I know recently there have been staff additions to enforcement or to the forestry department that will improve that, but it's still been an issue, and that's one of the things that this will help rectify. And then finally, you know, we're just not demonstrating best practices at this point. The ordinance that we have lacks numerous provisions that other cities around us have already implemented. The effects of this are both environmental and human: biodiversity loss, climate change, urban heat gain on the environmental side. On the human side, higher cooling costs, lower air quality, and the aesthetic loss of the trees in our neighborhoods. So the amendments that we're proposing, the revisions, are to essentially just specifically just maintain this canopy of healthy trees. That's our single goal. We're bringing the amendment, bringing the ordinance in line with other cities. We are doing that by including more trees with a protected status. We are adding a new heritage status. We're recommending remove exemptions to the current ordinance, but we'll still keep flexibility for developers. We have clarified what that means in subsequent slides. And this will likely increase the, through, in lieu of fee, increase the funds available for enforcement of the ordinance and essentially make this something that developers can't simply just slide through without having this be part of each project. So the proposed revisions specifically are, in terms of protecting additional trees, there's two ways we're recommending doing that. Number one, by changing the definition of what is a protected tree, and number two, by removing exemptions. So currently, the protected status is the only status of tree protection. We are going to be adding a heritage status. The current threshold is any tree above eight inches DBH, which means diameter at breast height, so just eight inches diameter, or a 20-foot or taller conifer. Those will be protected currently. Our proposal is to lower the threshold to five inches, which is consistent with several of the other cities that we've been talking to, and also to reduce the protected status on conifers down to 15. So that effectively includes additional trees as protected. Adding the heritage status, we'll get into what that means specifically in a moment, but any tree above 30 inches in diameter or 30 feet in height would be a heritage status tree. The proposed changes in exemptions, currently, you don't need to replace a tree if it's within 10 feet of a proposed building, deck or patio, within five feet of a proposed driveway, or within 10 feet of a roadway, or stormwater retention area or utility. What that means is, you know, at this point, on many lots, especially on the east side of the city, that makes up the entire lot at this point. And so if you remove a tree in that area to accommodate the new development, you do not have to replace it based on the current ordinance. You can just clearcut it and walk away. The recommendation is to remove this exemption. This doesn't mean that you can't remove a tree to put in a building, a deck, a patio, a driveway. It just means that you need to replace that. And so if you're taking it out, replace it according to what we're recommending on the next slide. There are also select low-value There are also select low-value species exemptions, we're recommending just keep those as-is, those were intelligently crafted before and certainly worth continuing. So, on to compliance. So, currently, the protection is, if you remove a protected tree, you must replace that protected tree one-for-one regardless of size with a tree of at least two and a half inches in diameter, or pay a $350 in lieu fee. So, if you pull out a 30-inch tree or a 10-inch tree, it's the same replacement requirement. What we're proposing is to replace protected trees with 75% of the diameter removed, or 75% of the height removed, or an in lieu fee of 300 per inch below that threshold. And I have a couple of examples on the next slide that will illustrate this a little bit more clearly, but on the heritage side, the recommendation is to replace with 100% of the diameter, 100% of the height, or in lieu fee of $500 per inch. And that, the reason for the higher threshold and the higher fee is those larger trees are worth protecting at a higher cost. So, under the examples, I just kind of threw some different sort of theoretical trees in here just to see what would happen. So, if you remove a 32-inch oak, currently, again, you'd only have to replace that with a two-and-a-half-inch tree. The proposal, under this new proposal, would be a heritage tree, and you'd need to replace that with 32 inches of trees, with a minimum of five inches each. Or, if you do not do any of that, the fee would be $16,000. Of course, if you were to replace, of the 32, if you replaced 30 inches with, replaced 30 inches of trees, the fee would be $1,000, be two inches times the $500. A white pine, another example, just on a protected tree, a white pine, a 24-foot-tall white pine would be a protected tree, and you'd need to replace that with 18 feet of trees with a minimum of eight feet. So, two nine-foot trees would cover that, and that's a more of a normal example of trees that are being taken out. The outcomes of this would be fewer clearcut lots during redevelopment, we would have a tree protection ordinance that would actually factor in the size of the tree being removed as opposed to just simply blindly saying a tree is a tree, and we would certainly be back in the realm of adopting best practices on tree protection in metro area. The additional fee revenue, it's difficult to quantify what that would look like, but that would directly fund enforcement of the ordinance, and, you know, essentially, developers will end up being more accountable to caring for the trees on the properties that they're So, our recommendation is to approve the ordinance changes excluding Section 24-4, which was the single thing that staff recommended against, and we don't have an issue with that, and I'm told you can waive the second reading if you'd like, so I guess we'd recommend that, too. Happy to take any questions.
All right, good, thanks for that presentation. Any questions from Commissioner Haugen, Commissioner, excuse me, Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the heritage status, I know when I was on the Energy and Environment Commission, we really struggled with how can we protect these big trees. Where did that idea come from?
We borrowed from, so the heritage status, I would say, is in probably half of the ordinances that we looked at, and maybe even a little more than half, and what we found was that around 30 inches, some as low as 26, some up to 32, that seemed to be where they were drawing the line. The, I don't remember which city it is, but one of them had a very restrictive protection clause on heritage trees, and it seemed like that was going to be a big headache if we tried to do that, headache for staff. So, we figured, in this case, simply making the verbiage and the mechanisms within the ordinance consistent between protected trees and heritage trees would be easiest to implement, easiest to understand for people that are going to try and comply with the ordinance, and just made sense to kind of factor in that way.
Okay, thank you. The way this works, and this may be current, but if you could let us know, when, at what point is inventory taken of the trees before the development begins? Do you know that, or maybe Manager Hancock, I don't know?
I know that from personal experience, in order to get a building permit approved, you need to have the tree survey complete submitted, and then the forester is supposed to check to see that you have adequate tree protection in advance of the permit being issued.
Okay, so it's a condition of the permit, so.
I'm open to being corrected on that.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. And then, is there a plan to educate our home developers about this, and what does that look like?
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah, I can comment. Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Edina does already host an annual residential redevelopment training, and Manager Neil can help me remember what ERCATs.
ERCATs, we call it.
Yeah, I remember the acronym, I do not remember what it stands for.
Edina Residential Redevelopment Accreditation, no.
Contractor.
ERCATs, contractor.
Anyway, we do host an annual training that residential developers are invited to attend. We typically have around 40 or 50, I think, each year, so this will be incorporated into that curriculum.
Okay, terrific. Well, thank you, Mr. Haugen, and thanks to the Energy and Environment Commission. This is something we've struggled with for years and years, and I'm just absolutely thrilled that this is coming to fruition. This is really good work, going through the whole report and everything, fantastic, A-plus job, and I'm thrilled. Thank you so much for all the time and energy you put into this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, Member Pierce, Member Jackson, thank you. I get, I'm jumping to the HRA meeting, I guess.
So, the staff recommended, and you agreed with removing Section 24-4, however, when you read through their reasoning for that, there's actually lots of good things there they're suggesting that should be done, when they talk about boulevards versus, you know, right-of-way, how homeowners might view that, and so it just seems like there's, they're actually not against having that be approved, but there's more work to be done to figure out the best way to do it. And so, my question is, how are we going to move forward and address, or at least assess, some of the recommendations that the staff does have in their report?
I think the issue with boulevard trees is that most people don't understand the distinction where the boulevard starts and ends, and they assume their yard is their yard and their trees are their trees. So, when I read through their recommendation against 24-4, I was, I, that point kind of won me over. On a personal level, I think the EEC vote was in favor of the entire ordinance. So, you know, I think, I think there, I think fundamentally is a communication issue with boulevard trees, people don't understand that that's different from their own property, that there's a distinction there, that there are clear view and right-of-way considerations. So, you know, I think that the main purpose of the revisions here is to simply just, like, stop the bleeding with tree loss and canopy loss in Edina, and I think this does that with sort of a follow-on. I'd be happy to take that as sort of a future work plan item or some kind of, some kind of, you know, follow-up to this.
Yeah, that's a good question, Member Pierce, and you hit the nail on the head, that staff is not opposed to this in the future, but that it needs more study because of the wider implications on how our right-of-ways are managed beyond only trees. So, staff is very happy if the Environment Commission or the Transportation Commission wants to take this question back up and research it more thoroughly in partnership with staff, we'd be very happy to continue working on that question.
Other questions for Commissioner Haugen or Grace Hancock? I thought, Member Pierce raised an interesting issue because it seemed to me that you have 24-4, which is tree removal, but then there's Section 4 of Chapter 24 that deals really with right-of-way management. And I thought, too, the language of Section 4D talking about right-of-way management was just fine to leave in there. It was the, you can't take a tree out without a permit language of 24-4 that I concurred with you on. So, I'm wondering what your thoughts are about taking out Section 4D as well as 24-4? Or recasting it?
Yeah, staff is comfortable with 4D. It is touching on best practices and speaks to the sections 24-2 and 24-3 that go into more detail about planting and maintenance. It was really just that removal piece that, that's, and the permit requirement specifically that is different from how other elements that are in the right-of-way are managed.
Could you strike through 24-4 tree removal and change 24-4 to right-of-way management best practices, something like that, and then use the language from D as a replacement for the language around you can't take out a tree in the boulevard without a permit? Does that make any sense? Or some other, you know, this makes me think, well, we could either fix it now, or we could just do first reading and you could fix it and come back.
I think we could switch Section 24-4 to include the language of 4D instead of.
I think that's where, that's where Member Pierce was heading, I think.
Sure, yeah, I think that would be fine.
So, would you want that done on a waiver second reading basis?
Yes, please.
See any problem with that, Mr. Kendall?
I, Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure I understand what you're proposing, could you just say which section again?
Was to strike? We may not have the full ordinance in front of us, but we were, what we're discussing is staff's recommending, and the EEC has a neutral position on 24-4, staff's recommending it not be included, tree removal, you know, you have to have a permit to remove a tree on the boulevard. So, removing that, but then replacing it with Section 4, or at least making it clear that, you know, we got Section D there, so I don't know what A, B, and C are either. There's some confusion here as to what we're not seeing in the ordinance, I think, because D looks like it's floating there by itself. Where are the other parts that we're missing?
It should just be D because there are already other sections of that Section 4 related to right-of-way management, but Director Milner has given me the good advice that we should do first reading tonight.
Right.
Come back with a clean ordinance, striking Section 24-4.
Right. Because I don't think we have posted the 10-day requirement either, so we're going to need to do that anyway. Okay. So, I'm going to ask Member Pierce if he'd want to make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-08 on a first reading basis. Wait a minute, no, it's not the right one. Motion approving ordinance 2022-10, amending Chapters 10 and 24 of the Edina City Code Regarding Residential Tree Protection on a first reading basis, and then make that correction on 24-4 to still include what you characterize as Section 4D in your draft. Does that make sense? You ought to move that, Member Pierce?
Yep, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Member Pierce, second by Member Jackson, to the motion stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Okay, good, I think that's a good, good way to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, of course, well, we don't have to address this next one then, do we? Or you want to prove it now?
You can just table that one.
Table it. Okay, is there a motion to table the approval of summary publication for ordinance 2022-10 concerning residential tree protection to the next meeting of the City Council on September 20?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, to adopt, motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to table the motion to approve summary publication of ordinance 2022-10 until our September 20 meeting. Any further discussion with regard to that motion? All those in favor of adoption of that motion stated say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now, we are on to Manager Neil and Attorney Kendall's favorite topic recently.
Thank you, Your Honor, I think, and members of council. Ordinance 2212 is, if adopted, will create a regulatory management system for the new THC-infused edibles and drinks that were approved by the Minnesota State Legislature earlier this year. And as we've had a couple of discussions on this topic, we know that they did not adopt a regulatory, a local regulatory or licensing system around those new products, that's why we're doing it tonight. In our previous discussions with you, staff had recommended that we use our tobacco control ordinance as the model for how we would propose to regulate these new products. I have talked about that model with the regulatory staff who would be in charge, so police, clerk's office, city attorney, public health, about whether that was a good model or not, does it accomplish everything that we want it to accomplish, and we think it does. So, we have tried to do, we've, we have been able to kind of mirror this ordinance with our tobacco ordinance, and so we think from a, from a staff perspective of implementing it, we think it'll be consistent, and we think we should be able to handle this with the existing staff that we have, and we know how to do this, and when it comes to tobacco, and we're pretty confident we can do it with THC-infused edibles and drinks. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Manager Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, when I read through this, and I may have missed it, is there any requirement that these products be held behind a counter at the way cigarettes are?
Yes.
Can you point that, where is that at?
Let me find that. Yep, that's just, all such products shall be stored behind a counter or other area not freely accessible to customers.
Okay, terrific, thank you, that was my question.
No self-servicing.
Yep, no vending machines.
Okay, thanks.
You know, structurally, one of the things I noticed in the definitions section, I think it would be helpful, and this is just for ease of reading and understanding of definitions, if the, if the word being defined were bold, in bold. So, minors in bold, for example, minor means, or bold in quotes, instead of just flowing on. But that's just, that's just a personal sort of nit from me. But to me, the term being defined ought to be clearly understood, since this is a first reading basis, I thought.
We are proposing just first reading tonight, in case there has been some additional questions or concerns from councilmembers, we would be able to incorporate them, but this, to the extent that we want a parallel regulatory environment from these new products to tobacco, we think that's important.
So, talk a little bit about the violation, the penalty section, 12558. Does this mirror what we do with respect to tobacco? Does this mirror what we do with respect to tobacco?
Mr. Mayor, yes, it does. This is derived from our current tobacco regulation ordinance. So the penalties are essentially the same.
What's, what's the fine for a first violation of selling liquor to a minor? I don't recall.
I'm sure it's different. You know, the liquor sales are governed by state statute, and this is governed exclusively by the city ordinance.
Yeah, what I'm thinking of it in terms of being, well, call it a hallucinogenic, right? It's a, it's a legal substance, just like alcohol, but it has, call it then, an intoxicating effect. And so it's not like smoking, selling an 18-year-old a pack of cigarettes, or a 16-year-old a pack of cigarettes. He's not going to go out and get in his car and wobble, you know, theoretically wobble down the road. But anybody who buys this product illegally, or sells it illegally, is that, is that an appropriate penalty mechanism structure for what we're talking about here? I don't have a strong opinion on it one way or the other, I just, it just seemed to me that it looks a little bit light.
Well, I think that's a moral judgment that the council should make. I mean, when we, we're, our proposal is really to try to produce something that's as uniform from one, from one regulatory environment to the other, because we think that's the best way to, to handle the enforcement of it. So that's where these penalties are coming from.
Anybody else have thoughts on that? I mean, I, I'm not ambivalent about it, but I just, because it's, it's the kind of substance it is, it seems to me to be clearly distinguishable from tobacco. And, but, maybe this is what we do for a while, and then we, if it's, if we see a lot of violations, we change the penalty structure.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd also point out that, for instance, sale of a product to someone under 21 would also be a violation of the state statute in addition to the local ordinance, so that could also be reported to the state for, for action at the state level. This would be the action that would occur at the, at the city level, which could be, and the council could certainly adjust those consequences.
And I don't want to be overly onerous with respect to our business folks, but maybe we just feel our way with what you proposed. People feel comfortable with that for the time being? Anybody have any other thoughts? Any other concerns about this structure? This, Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. I, I think you're on the right track in terms of considering, you know, what we're talking about is, are we gonna, would we see the sale of THC products to minors? That's really the, that's, that's what we're looking at. And then the question becomes, in that event, is $75 enough of a deterrent? And what if somebody decided to be looser about it? Or, for that matter, was, you know, somebody has a fake ID, whatever. And I do agree, this isn't, it's not tobacco. And so when we compare it to tobacco, if we compared it to liquor, it would be, the question was, what are the penalties for a violation, of first violation for a liquor sale? I don't know what that is, but is it more than 75, I would assume?
It's substantially more.
Yeah. And it, and I think that maybe that would, I would feel a little more inclined to consider that, that process, as opposed to tobacco. What are those? What are those amounts?
500 on a first offense and 1,000 on a second offense.
Well, I think that would have anybody checking IDs very, very carefully.
Plus, on the second offense on the alcohol-related service to a minor, you're getting suspended for three days, I think.
Yeah, we just did one. Yeah.
And here it's just a $200 fine.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll just mention, I guess, maybe, Manager Neil already mentioned this, but we used the starting point as the tobacco ordinance, and that's just the starting point. The council can certainly adjust it if the council feels that's necessary.
And then the appeal mechanism here is to go to district court. But we let people come here on appeal, on a liquor violation.
It's when you don't appoint a hearing officer, right? 12-553 says the city council shall serve as the hearing officer until such time as a hearing officer is appointed by the city council.
Correct. So I think that's actually the same. Currently, the city council serves as the hearing officer in administrative appeals.
Oh, okay.
That would be the same structure here.
Yep.
All right, yeah, so we serve as a hearing officer.
Correct.
So like, when that, when that liquor violation came to us, that was technically a hearing in front of us.
Yeah.
Correct.
And if they didn't like our decision, they had the right to appeal to the district court.
Correct.
Well, that's, that's a decent process. You know, we just don't know much about these products yet, and you don't know if a merchant could inadvertently sell something with THC in it that he didn't think had THC in it, but I guess that's what we're here for, right? If they want to come in and appeal it, or ask for a hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah, I think part of what's in here, too, is to comply with the dosage and the packaging and everything, so hopefully, any retailer who's going to be selling this takes a good look at what they're selling, because they are also responsible then for what it looks like, and only selling products that conform with the state law. But I'm in favor of making these fines to fit the, match the fines of, of alcohol, for sure. And I think if we don't change the other elements, it's not going to be confusing for our retailers, it's just the dollar amount, so that they know that they're dealing with something that has a fairly high penalty. And I'd like to see the suspension and revocation mirror alcohol, but these are people who aren't selling alcohol, so they're not getting the staff training that, that drinking establishments do. So...
That's a good point.
It's a funny gray area, but I think if they're already selling cigarettes, they understand the process of what it means, they're, the purchasing person is looking at it carefully to make sure the product that they're selling complies with state law, and then they follow the same process as they do with cigarettes, only the, the fines are much higher. They don't have to retrain people ostensibly who are the, the retail clerks.
Yeah, that's a good, good point. So maybe the first two levels of violation are, you get a little bit more, cut you a little bit more slack, but when you get to C, where here it's 250 for a third offense, within a 24-month period, maybe you think about a $1,000, $1,500 penalty with the, with that suspension.
Well, I think, wasn't the first violation of a drinking one 500, right? That's where I would start.
500?
Yeah, I'd start the same, same dollar amount as, as with alcohol, but the...
Then go to, then go to 1,000 on B?
Yeah. So I would have the four levels be the same as it is with alcohol for the dollar amount. I just think the process, you know, we're asking retailers to, to deal with an intoxicating substance, what they haven't had to in the past.
The reason I suggested something lower was because of your argument that nobody has to have training. We mandate training for alcohol.
Okay.
Therefore, they should be held to a higher standard, and a potentially higher penalty. That's what I thought you were, where I thought you were going with that argument.
But I think the consequence for suspension is probably not as severe as it is for alcohol, because alcohol tends to be in restaurants, and then the restaurant has some explaining to do to their customers when they come in. Whereas if this is a convenience store, or, you know, other establishment, they just can't sell that product for three days, five days, whatever. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we waive the first reading, schedule the second reading for our next meeting, and ask that the, that 12-558 be modified to change the penalty under first violation to $500, and under second violation to $1,000, and with third violation being... What's the maximum that we can do for it? For administrative penalties, is it 2,000?
I think so.
Yeah, so then maybe make it 1,200, and then 1,500 for the fourth one.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
Yes, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving Ordinance 2022-12 with the revisions provided for Section 12-558 by Councilmember Staunton, establishing a municipal licensing and regulatory system for THC-infused edibles and drinks on a first reading basis? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And then can we, I mean, when we bring it back for second reading, can we just talk a little bit about the, the staff education that we'll do when we're issuing the licenses? I don't know if there's going to be a booklet or something that'll explain to people, here's what happens if you get this wrong, and...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Help them figure out, so that they can do some training with their staff.
Yep, we will.
Really good idea.
Thanks.
Let's put as much as we can.
We'll have Jeff Brown at our, at the next time we talk about that. He wasn't, wasn't available tonight, but we'll have him there the next time.
All right, the last matter we have in the main portion of the agenda for the city council is Resolution 2022-72, site plan review with potential multiple variances for 4404 Valley View Road, and Director Teague has this matter. And Rebecca Remick's with us this evening from City Homes, and Jeff Zbarth from Perkins and Will, available for questions if they come up. And so I'm going to turn now to Director Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, just to summarize what the request was at the, the public hearing. So this site is known as the old Burley Site, 4404 Valley View Road. A conditional use permit was granted for this site to allow four housing units as part of the Edina Flats development, but the, the project that was approved was never built. So what the request is, is for a revised site plan with multiple variances. The variances are very similar to what were approved three, four years ago. The staff and the planning commission are recommending approval. The planning commission recommendation was a four-to-two vote. We've also included in the packet if the...
Four-to-two vote in favor?
In favor, yes. Yep, yep. There's also an option, if the council so chooses, for denial. That resolution is also included in your packet. We did receive several additional comments on Better Together, generally similar to the comments that we received previously, that the project is too big for the site, the variances are too large. One comment that I wanted to point out is the neighbor directly to the north, they expressed some concerns that when this project went through sketch plan review, the buildings were farther away. You recall that the, there was a driveway behind, behind the site, behind the buildings? So those driveways have been eliminated, and it's, there's more mass of the building that's moved closer to the neighbor. She also asked questions about the landscaping that's proposed along the, the lot line, and wondering, is that going to provide adequate screening and how tall they would get? So what's being proposed there is a, a row of pyramid arbivites, and they're a rapid-growing conifer tree. They can grow three to five feet per year, and at maximum height, they can grow to be 20 to 30 feet tall. So it's a pretty adequate screen along that north lot line. The applicant also provided some lengthy additional comments within the Better Together comments, but again, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report.
All right, thank you, yeah, for that clarification relative to the staff recommendation. Does anyone have, and the council have questions for Director Teague? Member Staunton?
So does it comply with the Wooddale Valley View Plan?
So, we believe, I believe it does, staff, and I believe the county, the planning commission as well, with the recommendation four-to-two. Recall, there is a, it was always contemplated residential more on the perimeter of the site, and the retail focused more at the intersection of Valley View and Wooddale. The rendering that's included in the small area plan shows a building facing, facing Oaklawn, but there's no driveways, you know, shown. It's assumed parking would be in the back from that. But it was always contemplated, or at least according to that rendering, that house, that this would be a housing site.
And is the height and the bulk consistent with what the, the plan calls for?
It is. It's two stories and 30 feet. Recall, when the plan was originally approved, the maximum height was 24 feet. We did an amendment to the small area plan, so that that height would be more consistent with a single-family home. It remained at two stories, but we increased the 24 to 30 feet, and that's what this proposal is.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague? I think with respect to the other city standards, whether through the plan or by code, this project complies with those, other than the variances that would be needed, which are, as you point out, the variances granted for the Edina Flats condo project several years ago are pretty close to the, what's proposed here by the applicant. In some cases, what they're proposing is a more significant setback. On Oaklawn, for example, on the variance granted for Edina Flats, it was 16 feet, and this is 20 feet.
Correct.
A little bit more separation from Oaklawn.
Yeah, the site, because of the, the two streets and the odd shape, there's really no building that could be placed there without variances.
And that was one of the problems I always thought about this site, was the, the shape of it, it really creates some problems.
Right.
And it's been tough to figure out what to do there. We had that one proposal that came and kind of died after sketch plan, which was, if I remember right, 11 affordable condo units with surface parking, which really felt like 10 pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag.
Agreed.
So, other questions or comments from council members on, on this proposed project? Well, let's, let's have a discussion in the context of a motion. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-72 approving the site plan review with multiple variances as specified by staff for 4404 Valley View Road?
So moved.
Second?
We get a motion, a second to approve the motion as stated. Discussion. Just Member Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, so I, I've been struggling with this for a couple of weeks, and so what the, this is what I come to on this. The, the project has so many desirable qualities, I've been rooting for it for a while. The potential of aging in place with possible elevator, elevator installation is very unique to the market. Site's compatible with housing, and it has the potential of providing the general transition that the small area plan calls for, not only to the node, but also to the residential neighborhood. So I want to commend you for paying attention to an aspect of the small area plan that, with regard to a turn to face Oaklawn, and that, because that aids with transition. The planning commission comments at, at that earlier public hearing noted many pluses, but what they consistently brought forward is the dominance of garages and driveways, and that's even by those who approved the site plan. And I do, I understand, I've been over there many times and, and talked to, interviewed the neighbor to the immediate north, and the site's problematic. That's why it requires more attention than the rest of the sites, again, according to the small area plan. Although, as Director Teague mentions, most developers would request variances on the site, depending on their business model. So if we could, Director Teague, if you would pull up on the staff review, the staff presentation, page seven, which shows the, the site plan that we're considering tonight. page seven, which shows the, the site plan that we're considering tonight. I think that's four, if we have, there, that's, that's tonight's. No, that's, that's, no, it's not. Okay, here we go, seven, there's seven.
There it is.
All right, so staff recommends that the boulevard sidewalks on both Oak Lawn and Valley View to accommodate tree planting, which is, that's well thought out. To accomplish that, though, on Valley View, what you could see by extending those sidewalks and creating a boulevard along those sidewalks, that draws the sidewalk closer still to the buildings themselves and that emphasizes the reduced setbacks that much more. Now, let's, let's take a peek at four, we may. And that just shows the, the potential of the rowhouse configuration on Oak Lawn. This shows two buildings and different in design, but it's essentially the same concept. So that's, we established that. On page six, I believe, yes, six. Six is the original concept proposed and as has been mentioned here this evening, the driveway that comes in off Oak Lawn services three of those four units that are proposed there, which was the, the primary consideration of the planning commission. How do you avoid all garage facing? So what do you do about that? So in this concept, the garage door dominance was not an issue and the driveway cuts were half of what is being proposed tonight. So I'm, I'm going to throw something out with a hope that this project can, can reflect the intention of the small area plan as well as be completed. So if we take a look at unit E2 here, that's, if we, if that faced north on Oak Lawn, we'll call it E2 for purposes here. If E2 faces north on Oak Lawn with the driveway where it currently is and if there's a combination of units W1, W2, and E1, now that would give only three units and I'm certain that the developer will have some concerns with that. However, it does, it eliminates the garage door dominance to the street completely. Not only that, but you only have one driveway that accesses those three buildings and if you can create in this depiction, in this driveway depiction, the driveway to the north, that allows you to create back out radius, removing the blind backups into traffic, especially on Valley View. That was an expressed concern by one of the commissioners the other night. And I, I would share that with her. So if, now, just to address what is probably being thought of by the developer as I make this statement. There is the possibility by using three units on this site and compacting, not necessarily compacting the units, but redesigning their flow here. There's a possibility here that you are not pouring a fourth foundation, not installing a fourth HVAC system, not doing the trussing required in that. So there's an economy of scale there. If there were some increased square footage in three units, I think you'd come pretty close to the business model that's being proposed. Because what I come to ultimately is, is that the multiple variance request is driven by too much on the site. This site is the key in the small area plan. This site is the key gateway site and a transition that should be easy, this one's not. I, I think there's the potential for an outstanding, attractive project, which meets the intent and recommendations of the small area plan and can be quite successful. So additionally, I listened carefully to the two former planning commissioners' testimony here in the public hearing time, one of whom co-chaired the planning group, both of whom have expertise in the field. And I, I can't, I can't reject that in terms of their input on it. I do think that it's, there's, again, the potential for an outstanding project. I just think the site plan that we're considering tonight is, is very difficult. I can't, I can't approve that one, but I'd sure love to see something very similar going on that site. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Other council members, comments? Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it was difficult to listen to the public hearing portions because we had three testifiers who asked for three different things. And it seems to me this is a funny little piece of land that, again, carries a lot of hopes and dreams and expectations. And the reality is, it's a very difficult piece of land to develop. I think the developer listened to everything that we said in sketch plan, took it into consideration and changed the plans accordingly. This is slightly denser housing or it is more dense housing than a single-family home, but it is less dense than an apartment building. The driveways are designed so that they can be turned around and not back out onto either Oak Lawn or Valley View Road. We've got the nice triangle at the end, which will have some entrance to the area. And I, I think the developer said she's going to put something that designates as the beginning of the Wooddale Valley View area, make it a marker that you're entering in a different, into a neighborhood. And, you know, I think the business of what is going to be on the, on Valley View Road, if you look at that sketch from the, from the small area plan, it is right there on the sidewalk. It's much closer than this is. There's, there's literally, there's a sidewalk and it looks like about a foot setback. So I think, you know, the original plan did have less exposure in terms of driveways and garages. We didn't like that. She went back and changed it and rotated the buildings according to what we asked her to do. So I just think this is a very difficult piece of land to develop. I think these will be nice homes. They are a unique type of housing that's needed in this community. And I just don't think that we can expect a developer to be able to build something that fits exactly what was thinking. The Edina Flats wasn't viable and I think we just have to come up with something that's viable. This is viable and I think it's going to be very nice. So I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Member Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would concur with Member Jackson. The comments that I think the developer listened, made several adjustments to the plan along the way. I would, if I could, ask if, if the developer does have a response to the idea that Member Anderson raised. If you'd be willing to speak to that, I would like your opinion on that proposal.
Ms. Remick?
Thank you. I understand the three versus four, but at your first mention, when you did bring it up, was the financial viability of three versus four. And unfortunately, three versus four does not work from a financial viability standpoint for this project. Yes. Does that answer the question? Okay.
Yeah, it does.
Thank you, thank you. And so I, I do think, as I mentioned, the developer's done a, I feel like a good job of listening and adjusting. I think it's a difficult piece of land and it was challenging as I kind of fought through this, but I am in support of this particular proposal.
Thank you. Member Staunton?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little puzzled at the aversion to the driveways with the garage doors facing the street, because if you look up Oak Lawn, every other property has a garage door with a driveway. And there's a driveway in a parking lot right next to the driveway off of Valley View and they've figured out how to create a, a way to turn around so you're not going to have to back on to Valley View, so. You know, I, I think this site has been talked about since, we've had several attempts at this site since the project, since the small area plan was adopted, what, six years ago or so? And so it is a difficult site and, and on the whole, I'm, I'm supportive of it because I think it complies with the small area plan and, and deals with a challenging site, so I'll vote in favor.
Thank you, Member Staunton. All two vote in favor of it. The product which Ms. Remick calls rowhouses is really a townhouse product. And if there's one thing that we hear from realtors that they constantly want in Edina, it's a townhouse product. And here we have a chance to put four of them on a site where we had approved four condos before. And we're basically on the verge of approving something that is almost identical in terms of the variances needed to what we had approved before. The front law, the front setback on Oak Lawn was approved for the flats at 16 feet. They're at 20 feet here on this proposal. Valley View Road setback, 10 feet and five feet have been approved for Edina Flats condos were at 10 feet. The side yard north lot line was at five feet under the condo proposal, were at seven feet, slightly more. In the rear west lot line, we didn't have a variance there, it was non-applicable, but it's five feet is what's being proposed here. As Member Staunton pointed out, it's entirely consistent with the small area plan. Two stories and 30 feet is what's proposed under the plan and what's the standard under PCD1, they're at two stories and 30 feet. The floor area ratio under the city standard at 1.0 is what they're proposing. The density at 30 units per acre is consistent with what they're proposing. And so those sort of technical issues, I think, are consistent with what we had approved in the past for a product that never got built because it required underground parking. And I agree with Member Staunton that when you look up and down the street, there's many of, many, and many front loading garages on Oak Lawn and elsewhere in the community. I think this is an outstanding project and I think the design work by Perkins and Will is first rate and the use of the materials are first rate. And it's, it's a far superior design, in my opinion, to what was originally proposed and it's because we all worked on this together and the developer listened to what we wanted to do, so I'll be supportive of it as well. So we've got a motion in front of us to adopt Resolution 2022-72, which approves a site plan review with multiple variances for 4404 Valley View Road. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
Carried. All right, that completes the main portion of the agenda this evening. We've got things in our packet that relate to minutes from some of our advisory commissions. And then we're going to go to manager comments and I'm assuming that the Edina Arts Center status update is something you're going to cover in your comments?
Well, I think Councilmember Staunton is going to cover that and I'm going to help him.
All right. I thought they had possibly been misplaced. All right.
I don't have anything tonight, Your Honor.
Well, let's go wait until Member Staunton then find out. He's thinking about it here, sir. Do you want me to go to somebody else first? I, you, search. Member Jackson? We might get on a roll here.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to defer because I want to comment on what Member Staunton's going to say, so.
Member Anderson? I don't know if you got the over or under.
No, I, yeah, actually.
You want to filibuster?
I've got the under and so I'm feeling pretty good about that right now.
I just wanted to commend the council on taking a very appropriate action on the Melody Lake area. I, I feel that those folks were recognized and I think they, they, they could see very clearly that the, the remedies are in the making and their involvement by virtue of watering, spending time on it has been recognized. So I want to just thank the council in general for that because I think it was good work. I also want to mention that in the course of the last week, we've had some communication, especially from the Cornelia neighborhood, on the construction project at 4040 West 70th. And it's caused some concerns, some consternation. I, I know that Director Hawkinson reached out to the developer to try to bring that under control to the best of her ability. And I know that City Manager Neil did as well, with no positive result in terms of, of giving a little time to the residents to make sure that they had the inspections if they so chose them. I, I, going forward, what, what, one of the things that I've learned here is that, and we, and we put it in play here tonight, is that a position of advocacy for people who are affected by anything that happens in our town is the absolute best position for us. And I'm not saying that we don't think like that, I'm simply saying that in this instance, where there was a lot of consternation, there was a good faith effort on the part, especially of staff, to try to amend that in some way. But there's some level of, of protocol around these matters, for instance, an education piece for the, the necessity of those inspections if you're within X feet of, say, pile installation, even assembling a, a number of potential inspectors that we might be able to negotiate a, a price on. Making certain that we have the relationship with the developer on, on any project with close proximity to a residential neighborhood. I, I think that's an order as well. I don't think it takes too much to do those things. And so I just, I just, I just want to mention that and again, thank you for your earlier great work.
Thank you. Here, Mr. Anderson. Member Staunton?
I think I'm ready here. So I wanted to raise an issue. At our July 19 meeting, we received a commission advisory communication, which we often do in our materials from the Arts and Culture Commission. And oftentimes when we receive those, we kind of skim through them and they don't, they don't demand that we take action. And so, you know, sometimes I think they kind of slide by without notice and, and I wanted to note what that document from the Arts and Culture Commission did. And I know that Susan Chandler and, and I think there's others perhaps from the commission, I can't recognize everybody back there. But, but she was one of the authors of this and it was basically in response to our meeting that we had in a work session with the Arts and Culture Commission on May 4th, which talked about, you know, the plan for a new art center and the need for a new art center. And the memo goes through in pretty good detail, a lot of, a lot of what has happened and what is recommended to go forward and, and is, I think, requires a response from us. And we ought to either encourage them to move forward as they're recommending or in some similar way, or tell them that we don't want to and get people to stop wasting their time on these things. And I happen to think we ought to encourage them to move forward and, and, you know, it is ironic that on a night when we heard about the Grand View Plan, almost coming to a conclusion after a long time. You know, much of that time also included discussion of an art center and companionship with, with that Grand View Plan. And so, so I think it's an appropriate night to, to encourage the Arts and Culture Commission to proceed with that. And I don't know, Manager Neil, if you have any, any kind of updates from us in terms of the status and, and how staff wants us to, to recognize this or move forward or encourage this, because I'm in favor of moving forward on this and I just want to know what, what we need to do to make that happen.
What does moving forward mean? I can't recall.
Well, moving forward, you know, they've got a variety of recommendations for a new building, for, you know, the location, for programming, for data management, for membership program. So I'm not saying we have to, you know, agree to everything. program. So I'm not saying we have to, you know, agree to everything that's in the memo, but I think we need to signal to the Arts and Culture Commission whether we want them to proceed or not. And obviously, we're going to be able to approve whatever comes forward to us, but, but I think they're feeling a little kind of in limbo at the moment, and we ought to, we ought to tell them whether we want them to continue or to stop.
Thank you, Member Sutton. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor and members of council. I think there are two signals you could send, actually. One is to the commission, and I think you articulated that, Councilmember Sutton, about what that might sound like. I think the other one is to staff, right? And, and you can do that through the CIP process, which is, we're in, we're in kind of the, I would say, the mid to late stages of putting together a capital improvement program for you for the next six years. But within that capital improvement program, there are, there's, there are priorities, there are prioritized projects, there are, there's not as much money as there is projects, and we've talked about that before, but there, but there are elements of this process that could be broken down and separated in terms of, of appropriating some money for, for, to move it ahead. And you will have the opportunity to do that later this fall. So I think that's one direction you could give to me, and you could send a direction to the, to the Arts and Culture Commission as well.
So one, you know, one of the kind of conundrums of this is, is I think one of the essential pieces of success for the art center is the pottery program, and that requires certain facilities like Kilns that, that are not, not necessarily always compatible with being close to public transit or in a more densely populated area. But one location that comes to mind for me is the new fire station. I mean, we're going to have a big footprint there, and I'm not sure we need it all for fire, and who knows? I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that's what we ought to do, but, but I, I think we ought to send a signal to the Arts and Culture Commission, and then later in the fall to the staff, that, that this is a priority and that we should encourage continued move forward.
We are starting to work on doing some conceptual site planning for that fire station site because we don't need all eight acres of it for a fire station. So we've hired Terry Monarch to help us do that. He's aware of our, of our requirements for the Southdale District. And so at some point, that information or that, that's going to get into a firmer sort of shape, and we'll come back to planning commission and city council for, for some blessings.
Right, and I, I know we had some glimmer of a possibility of 50th and France at one point, but again, that had the trouble of how do you, how do you have a robust pottery program in that dense environment? And so I'm, I'm, so I guess, you know, without kind of dissecting it further, and it's probably not appropriate in that kind of detail tonight, I'd, I'd like to encourage the members of the Arts and Culture Commission who are here tonight and who've worked so hard on this to continue, and then, and then look forward to working this into the CIP as we work on that later this fall.
Counselmember Jackson, you have a comment, I think?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So for the public, just to know what happens behind the scenes, I actually called Member Sutton to ask him when the Grandview system or process started because I know he was part of that and have a discussion about, I believe it was 2009. But in the course of that, he, he did raise this issue about the art center. And I had another discussion with another resident who had a really brilliant idea, and that is to have the city council talk with senior staff before we get plans put together for this fire station site. When we bought that piece of land, I saw in my head an art center on that site. I know there are other things that are just in discussion, like affordable housing, and there's going to need to be some water and park element there because there is a lot of water on the property. But I sure would like to see that be a fire, art center as well as a fire station there, and I'd like to have the city council in on the discussion as a work session, maybe like a Saturday session, which we weren't able to have this year. But when you guys, when the art center, Arts and Culture Commission presented to us, you talked about the space needed and wanting to be near a transit line and wanting to have the ability for people to come. We've got the space, it's on a transit line, and I would just be thrilled to have an art center there. And I don't know the steps to have that, but that was, that was one of the reasons I really liked that site because it opened up that possibility. When we talked about using what's now Fire Station 2, boy, the time delays, the problems with the structure was insufficient. I would like to see an art center on that 76th Street site, and, but I think that we should have that discussion, and I'd like to, to request from staff that we do that before the plans are really drawn up. And then, once we have plans, we can have maybe an open house to the public, Plan 1, 2, 3, and then what did we miss, so that the public feels that they have input on this site as well. But, but I'd like to be, I'd like it not to surprise people, and I'd really love to see an art center there. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Member Pierce?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, so I support everything that has been said, but I am confused from a procedural standpoint. I, most of what you have just said, I felt like we said the last time we talked in a, in a working session, where we looked at plans, we, when we, we did the fire station, we talked about, oh, it'd be neat to have an art center there. The current art center is, is not sustainable. What are the options we're looking at? It, it felt like we were on that path. So I'm, this isn't really a question, but I'm just confused process-wise, what we're really asking for that's different than what we should be doing anyway? Looks like Member Sutton has a response to that.
Yeah, fair question. And, and I think, you know, what, I think that may be why it kind of slid by on the 19th of July is that we had said that in May when we met with them. But, but the beginning of their memo says, "In order to focus and unify efforts of the commission, the city council and city staff, the Arts and Culture Commission asks that the city council formally and publicly announce a resolution to support the construction of a new art center for the city of Edina." Now, whether that's a resolution or not, I think the point was to have a public, you know, kind of raising up of this and say, yeah, we'd like to work on that and figure out a way to make that happen. And we've all said that, so I don't think it's controversial for us because we've said that. But I think saying it in this setting, I think sends the right message to, to the members of the commission as well as to staff.
Member Anderson, go ahead, Member Pierce.
Absolutely fine with that. But again, I don't think it should take that. And so I, I felt like coming out of the working session, that should have been the direction. So whatever should have happened between then and now, the Arts Commission should have felt that we wanted them to keep going. I mean, there was nothing coming out of that meeting that would have suggested anything other than that. But we talked about needing to find an appropriate location. So my comments aren't about arts and commission. I support that. It's more procedural and process. So if there's something that needs to be tweaked or is broken from that perspective, we need to fix that.
Member Anderson, your insights?
I concur.
He's working on the two minutes to the other thing.
You know, I mean, Manager Neal is going to address this, but I do think this whole
advisory communication business is the procedural hinkiness that Member Pierce has identified because it kind of, we kind of never, we don't have a strict way of dealing with these communications.
We don't. We tell boards and commissions, council members read their packets from beginning to end. They may comment on your advisory commission, advisory communication, they may not. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean they don't support it either way, but, but that's, that has been the protocol that we use for advisory communications. If one of you raises it, we'll talk about it openly. If you don't, then you don't. I think in terms of procedure that Councilmember Pierce talked about, I think the normal process of, we, we just really closed on the ownership of this, of this land, right? So just two weeks ago. So now we've got it. Now we're doing some conceptual land planning with, with a landscape architect. We can't do that, we can't approve that just as staff. Your fingerprints are going to be all over it, too. And that's on its way. So there's a number of steps, including the engagement steps that have to happen with that going forward. So it's, it's, it's a slow pace, but, but developing land in Edina is a slow process, and there's a lot of engagement at the regulatory levels, at the political levels, and the community levels, too.
And I want to be clear. I mean, that's an idea. I'm not suggesting that, you know, we suddenly pivot from, to your procedural point, you know, that, that's no way to run a railroad either. But, but it, it's an interesting idea that may kind of slay this conundrum of location versus facility. So, anyway.
I like the resolution language that Member Sutton just read that came from the folks on arts and culture. What I was sitting here thinking was, if we tell them to keep going, keep going on what? Because to me, there's still another alternative possibility for an art center location, because in my mind, the reason we bought that land on West 76th or 77th was to put up a fire station. And if nothing else works there but a fire station, that's okay with me. If we can get more on there, I think that's something we ought to think about. But I do not want to give up on the idea yet, or abandon the idea of what we do with the existing fire station number two by Southdale. Why? Because it's probably a good building, it's a, it's on transit, it's a great location for doing pottery work, and it could be, you know, that, that's the core of a remodel, that's far less expensive than building a whole brand-new art center on the, the fire station, new fire station number two site. So if people want to go forward with conceptual ideas and talk about some of the things they've done in their advisory opinion, that's, that's okay with me. But I don't want somebody going down a track that we don't end up going down and then be disappointed because we didn't do what they wanted them to do, with the fire station being the paramount consideration for the purchase of that land. And, and it may be far more, as I said, I'm, I'm getting redundant now, economical to do it over on old Fire Station 2 site next to Southdale. Why? So that's where, that's where I am. I don't, I don't really know what kind of advice to give them, except maybe stand by until we get a little bit further down the road and don't do any more, because they did a lot of work on the advisory opinion. We got that. I mean, that's all good stuff. So I, you know, I, I don't know. Yeah, we're, we're generally supportive of the idea.
We're in raging agreement.
Where to take that idea to in town is something, I think it's an open question.
Where it should be and how we should pay for it, right? Those are the two, those are the two big questions you have to answer.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Member Sutton?
No. No, my dog is still dead.
Oh, boy.
I just had one, one observation. So I just want everybody in Edina to just love their city. And I'm going to give you an example. My wife and I were doing lunch in another city not too far from here, and it's a restaurant that is not in Edina. And we were sitting in the parking lot eating. Someone parks, jumps out of their van, and puts trash, just takes trash out of their van and leaves it there, goes in shopping, right? And I said to my wife, I, I can't believe that they did that. And I wanted to get a bag, collect the trash, and put it back on the car. And my wife wouldn't let me do that. She's a wise woman. But I sat there just shocked that someone would do that. And that's the second time that I've seen that. I've seen that in another city. I've never seen that in Edina. But I will share that I had my three girls, we were going to a YMCA event. They gave us the wrong address. So where we parked, this was a different city. We get out, and my youngest says, Dad, why is there so much trash everywhere? And so there was just litter in the streets. And so my, I use those examples. We, we put a lot on the city. We have high expectations of our city staff. We expect a lot. But there's also a lot that we can do as residents to protect and care for our own city. And so I just want to send a word of encouragement to everybody to not put everything on the city staff. Things that should be, we're accountable for and responsible for, you should definitely hold us accountable for it. But there are also things that we can do as individual residents to care for our city. So we should do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Chad, would you give us, I walked down from the Hilltop the other morning to check on the Arcadia Eden Avenue roundabout, and they were, they were rolling down there. I mean, the curb's going in, and it's pretty much shaped up. It looks pretty good. Give us an update so we, you know, city, people in our community know where we are.
Yeah, there's, there, we're hoping, we had a meeting today. So there's light poles, the rapid flashing beacons for the crosswalks need to go in, and another layer of pavement, and they're going to start topsail next week. So we have about three weeks of work. We're hoping to open it up by October 3.
October 1?
1st or 3rd. 3rd is a Monday, so we hope to have it open before school starts on that Monday morning. So it could be late Friday, or it could be early, early Monday morning. That's our plan right now, if everything works out all right.
Great. Okay, thanks. And then with regard to that project over at 4040 West 70th, from what I know, that the, about the project work, they're meeting all the requirements under city code, they're meeting all the requirements under state law. But nonetheless, to the point that Member Anderson was making, there could be lessons learned here in terms of, of communication interface, and I think it'd be good to have your, the last word come from you on, on this issue tonight.
Oh, I, I think there are some things we can learn from a communication standpoint. We've learned a lot of lessons when we decided to take more control over the residential redevelopment process. I was telling Councilmember Anderson, when I started here in 2010, I would have two angry calls a day about residential redevelopment. Now I get two a year. And that's because we spent, we spend a lot of time regulating that process, and we've gotten good at communicating, expecting, setting expectations and communicating with neighbors. We could do a better job of doing that around commercial apartment buildings as well. So there are some things we can learn from this process. But, you know, our, as I've said before, our loyalty from a staff standpoint is to the law, and we want to make sure that we're being fair to everybody concerned and holding the developer to all the, all the permitted requirements that we hold them to. And, and we are doing that in this case with no exceptions.
Good. Thank you. That cause anybody else to have any follow-on comments? All right. We've got an HRA meeting, and we've got a little bit of work to do here following the city council meeting, and the staff's going to need a few minutes in between the end of the council meeting and the start of the HRA meeting to kind of reboot everything. But is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting for Wednesday, September 7, 2022?
So moved.
Second. A motion by Member Sutton, second by Member Pierce, that we adjourn the city council meeting for September 7, 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Council meeting is adjourned.